Okay. So just letting the public know, we're back to our previously set up practice of being, for a majority of us, virtual, connecting by phone. The clerk is going to go ahead and get everyone online and then we'll start the meeting.
Welcome to the GCI Conference Center. Please enter your access. Thank you. Please stand by. If you are the chairperson, press the star key. Oh, please enter your chip. You will now be placed into conference. There are 10 participants in the conference.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We just got you online and I'm going to make sure the clerk is with me and call the meeting to order. Are we up?
I am ready.
Okay. So I'll call this Wednesday, July 1st, Special City Council Meeting of the City Assured to Order. City Manager Mizaros, would you start us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, would you go through the roll call, please?
Tonight's roll call. McClure?
Here.
Osanga?
Here.
Sees?
Here.
Bucklon?
Present.
Butts?
Here.
Kreitz?
Here.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
You have a quorum.
And for those on the phone in the room for staff, we have City Clerk Brenda Ballou and City Manager Scott Mizaros. I know there's other folks besides council on the phone. Would you, I know it's super awkward in a group, but if you guys could just try to say who's there.
My name is Leslie Phelps. I'm the nurse manager from Kenai Peninsula Public Health Nursing.
Leslie Phelps.
Leslie Phelps, thank you.
Dr. Anne Zane, chief medical obstetricist, state of Alaska.
Thank you, Dr. Zink.
And Mr. Dr. Jerome McLaughlin, data chemiologist, state of Alaska.
Okay.
Bridgette Rockne, Health Central Regional Manager for Public Health Nursing, state of Alaska.
This is Amanda McKinley from Kenai Stewart Public Health.
Thank you. Holly Wells, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am. I'm here.
Great. Did we hit everyone? Thank you. And just for those who are not aware, Holly Wells is the city attorney. So again, this is, we're back to our practice of having a majority of folks on the phone. So just to the council members and to others, or actually to the council members unless you're asked a specific question, unless it's Holly, our city attorney, if folks could say their name before they speak, and then I'll also, for the council members, go through when we're doing a vote and just making sure that people have the opportunity to make comments. So appreciate everyone's patience. Again, appreciate the citizens during this time. Next on the agenda is item number four, citizen comments on any subject except those items scheduled for public hearing. Madam Clerk, I'm going to assume that most of the comments are specific to the public hearing. Are there any additional comments for this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have four people who have requested to make comments.
Okay, under this, under this title.
Under citizen comments.
Okay. Did you want to go ahead and just read those and then I'll help you with the public hearing?
I am happy to, and I'm just noticing the first comment is a public hearing item, so I'm going to push that to public hearing.
Okay.
The second comment received is from Linda Paquette. Sorry. Government is funded by taxpayer dollars. Three of its primary functions are protect the natural rights. The primary functions of government are to protect the basic human rights, which include right to life, liberty, and to possess property. The idea of natural rights is because every person deserves to enjoy these rights. It is assumed that people are born with these rights and that they shouldn't be taken away from them without their agreement. Second, managing economic conditions. The modern government has a duty to fight poverty and improve the quality of life of its citizens. In order to achieve this, the government must create a conducive environment for material prosperity and economic growth. And third, prevent any externality. An externality is an indirect cost or benefit occurring from an activity that impacts your society. In most cases, externalities affect people who are not participants in an event or activity. The impact can neither be negative or positive. Can either be. On these points, particularly at the last point, you have failed the community 100%. The government of Seward has failed both its residents and neighbors, as has the state of Alaska. The people needed you to lead and rise above the screaming. The people needed you to stop governing by friendship. You put money ahead of lives and taking care of all of us. You're supposed to take care of all of us. You and administration have failed this community in the most fundamental of senses. One has to wonder how many of you understand the role government is supposed to play in our lives? Have you heard of prevent any externality? Here's an example. Lodging businesses who have no staff that attended the concert and no reason to close are receiving cancellations because Seward made national news with its outbreak. These are businesses that already suffered tons of losses and have spent time and money to recover, only to get swept in this mess and undermine that work. Why? Because you chose not to act. You didn't even need council administration, you didn't even need council administration could have taken care of this. Where were your attempts to prevent externality? Where were your attempts to protect our natural rights or manage the economic conditions? You knew this was going to happen and you let it happen. All of this was your choice. Please do the right thing now. Next is Fernando Salvador, who has requested to be called.
Fernando, this is Brenda Ballou. You are on the phone with city council. You can provide your citizen comments on any items except the public hearing.
Okay. My name is Fernando Salvador. I'm the vice president and general manager of the Alaska Coalition by Pursuit. We have several businesses down in the Seward area, one being Kenai George Tours, Kenai George Wilderness Lodge, and Wintong Lodge out on Equator Road out there. Throughout this global health crisis, Pursuit has remained to ensuring the safety of our guests, our staff, and members of the communities in which we live, work, and play. This includes developing a stringent safety promise program to elevate cleanliness standards, tighten physical distancing measures, and increase staff training protocols across our collection of attractions and hospitality experiences, both here in Seward and across all the other areas which we operate. To ensure the safety of our team members and the visitors to Seward and the community of Seward as a whole, in response to the current virus outbreak, we have temporarily suspended our operations at Kenai George Tours and Kenai George Wilderness Lodge. We also have delayed our July 1st opening of the Resurrection Roadhouse at the Wintong Lodge until the 8th of July. We are in support of the city's proposed emergency ordinance for the next 14 days to enable deeper social distancing measures to curb the rate of infection to the current outbreak. We do request that the city council amend regulations for tours and charters. Specifically, we're asking for the removal of the 16-person capacity maximum surrounding 50% oxygen regulation. Additionally, given the importance of the summer season to our visitor economy, we ask that the emergency regulations be reevaluated after a 14-day implementation period. I'd just like to thank you all for your ongoing support and we appreciate your consideration in these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
And Madam Mayor, the last person who signed up is another phone call and it is Diane Dubuque. Do you know, so I think there's some misunderstanding. I mean, obviously, that was speaking to the ordinance. I mean, let's, it's fine either way, but I wonder if she, I'm guessing she's going to speak to the ordinance, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, let's, we need to call and check, but.
I do try and clarify.
Yep.
Could you put the microphone just a little bit more? She might be louder.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, Diane, this is Brenda Ballou. You're on the phone with city council. You have three minutes to deliver your citizen comments on any item except public hearing.
My name is Diane Dubuque. I live on my boat in the Seward harbor. I would like to address the warning in Section 5, Council Emergency Regulation Number 5, which reads, "All tours and charters, including sightseeing and echo tour operations, shall limit indoor seating capacity to 10 people or no more than 50% of maximum capacity, whichever is greater. I have owned and operated the FB Flor SD for 29 years. I have been providing king salmon fishing charters in Seward since 1998, generating income for myself, my crew, local businesses, the municipalities, and the Kenai Peninsula borough. Back in March, I drafted and submitted a community and workplace protection plan and had it filed with Incident Command in the state DEC. The plan is very detailed. The safety of the community, my guests, and my crew are of utmost concern. For the most part, I have been adhering to the plan. Some kinks had to be worked out, but the bulk of the plan remains in place. My crew and I have been tested and are COVID-free. Guests are verbally screened before boarding. There is a handwashing station on the dock and another on my back deck. My crew is masked, but I should however give my guests the option to mask or not while on deck."
Dale, we're just going to go because it's three minutes versus five minutes. So we're just, she's already started in, let's just let her finish.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Dubuque. I'm sorry for the interruption.
My crew is masked, but I however give my guests the option to mask or not while on deck. Masks are mandatory when inside the house. Rods and seat armrests and communally touched surfaces are continually being wiped down with disinfectant. Because of the new situation in Seward, my guests arrive, get on the boat, fish, and go either to their home, RV, or hotel. All food, beverages, and other necessities are brought from their home base. Contact with local residents is at a minimum. We knew that it would be rough-around-the-road clientele that kept us afloat this summer. Although I lost all of my May and April trips, I was very fortunate to have a good turnout from Alaskans wanting to fish king salmon in June. I was only off by a few trips from 2019. I have been generating sales tax for the city and the borough, as well as taxes for the harbor. As we all struggle with staying safe, as well as keeping our economy from going down the tubes, I respectfully ask council not to penalize companies who are running a clean operation by reducing the number of flights we can have onboard. July is looking very frightening now, and my only hope is that with your help, we can weather the storm together. Thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you, Diane. Have a good evening. And that is the end, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Next on the agenda are the, is the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
I just seconded.
Great. So on the agenda, and there are no items on the consent agenda, and the main item on the agenda is the emergency ordinance. I'll go through quickly, looking to my right and left, if there's any comments at the dais. Sorry? Administration. We're on the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. So we'll go to, Osanga, did you have any comments on the agenda?
No comment.
Kreitz? Butts?
No comment.
Thank you.
No comment.
And then, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, was Cheryl Sees on the line?
She is.
Okay. Councilmember Sees?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Thank you. So right now, we're on the approval and consent agenda. Everyone will just have to be forgiving as we're stumbling through this again. Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for a vote.
Voting on tonight's agenda. Osanga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Sees?
Yeah.
Bucklon?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Your agenda is approved. There are no consent items.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item six, ordinances for public hearing and enactment. Emergency Ordinance 2020-008. Madam Clerk, would you read the title into the agenda?
Emergency Ordinance 2020-008 is temporarily adopting city council emergency regulations ordering the closure of city-owned campgrounds, prohibiting gatherings of more than 20 persons, requiring facial coverings inside buildings open to the public, and limiting eating establishments, bars, and retail stores to 50% capacity indoors in response to the rapid increase in COVID-19 cases within the city of Seward.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move for the enactment of ordinance, emergency ordinance 2020-008.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And motion by McClure and second by Bucklon. Can, now we are, we have a motion on the floor, so normally, right now, we would have the administration provide comments. This ordinance is being sponsored by myself, Vice Mayor McClure, so I'm going to make comments and go through the ordinance. I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor McClure for comments, and then we'll also look at administration if there's further comments. Following those is when we will open up for public hearing and read through the public comments. So if I could have folks look with me, I just want to start by saying, you know, there was great potential at this juncture to call a code orange, which would shut down all businesses. So we would go back to the mandate 11, which would shut down all businesses for, you know, suggested one to two weeks. Basically, this is my attempt for us to, as a community, look at additional mandates that we can put in place so that we don't close down as a community. I want to say that we are in a better spot today because the private businesses that were affected by those COVID cases took it upon themselves to close when they knew there were issues, to clean, clean up, clean their areas, you know, regroup, be closed through the, through weekend, which is what we want to happen. Those private business sectors, businesses responded very quickly to the issue once it developed. So looking at the sections, I just want to start off with City Council Emergency Regulation Number 2. And it might be a little extra, but I'm going to read through some of this. So this is except as otherwise provided in this regulation. All individuals in Seward must wear a mask or cloth covering, which there's been some suggestion that we change that language, but honestly, a mask covers whether it's a surgical mask, an N95, you know, or a cloth covering. So instead of saying face covering, we're very specific, saying mask or cloth covering, and that would be in buildings, so it does not include outside, open to the public, where they cannot maintain six feet of space between themselves and individuals outside the households. For example, if you're in your office and the door is closed, you do not need to be wearing a mask. The individuals exempted from this would be 12 and under, and I know that there's people that have suggested that we go with the CDC, too. I have it in here as 12 and under because that's just my opinion with four or five-year-olds. I wanted to see that age be a little bit higher for children. Individuals with trouble breathing, individuals with a medical condition that prevents from wearing a cloth covering over their nose or mouth are all exempt from this regulation. So facial coverings need not be worn when individuals are alone or only with members in their household. Individuals are eating and drinking in compliance with the state of Alaska public health mandates. And here's something that's additional from the previous time when we had this ordinance before us. So however, facial coverings must be worn in public establishments when not actively eating and drinking. For example, coming into a restaurant prior to ordering, you need to have your mask on. Then you take your mask off and eat, then as you're done and paying your check, you have your mask on to leave. Additionally, the same in a bar. When you're not drinking, if you're just playing pool, you need to have a mask on when you walk in the establishment. And then three, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. So individuals are receiving lawful services that cannot be adequately performed while the recipient is wearing a face covering. So if someone, if you're getting a facial, if that's, you know, if that's happening, you don't have to wear a face covering, but the esthetician does. Section three, so this is where the city-owned campground shall be closed for recreational camping purposes. And that's not going to be where we're using the police officers to route out everyone that's down there. So what's going to happen is the city will take, will not take additional reservations or campers, and will coordinate with the current campers to depart at the end of their paid stay without renewal. Right now in there, we have city-owned campgrounds may be open for use of essential workers and critical infrastructure employees. I'm going to have a motion that takes out those words, essential and critical infrastructure, so just as workers and employees. And the intent behind that is so that we have many seasonal employees that might not be called essential workers, but they're here in the community working, and they should, they need the ability to be at the campgrounds. And there's also some potential, I think there's some comments that'll talk about the potential to revert back to 50% instead. So section number four, so this is where all in-person gatherings of 20 or more individuals are prohibited within the city. So that excludes gatherings governed by the next section. So what this section is talking about, you can't have a wedding if it's going to be more than 20 people in the, you know, in a building. You can't have a family barbecue. So it's those types of large gatherings. Except for, in section five, here's additional. So all eating and drinking establishments, including restaurants, bars, ice cream, specialty food shops, all retail stores, and all tours and charters, including sightseeing and echo tourism operations, shall limit indoor seating capacity to 10 people or no more than 50 of maximum capacity, whichever is greater. So that's caused some, oh, excuse me, and then it says, no establishment shall serve more than 60 persons indoors at one time regardless of maximum capacity. I want to speak to the whichever is greater language. So what that does is it protects our six-pack charters, as an example. So if we had a six-pack charter and they were required to run at 50% capacity, they can't afford to do that. So what that does is let those, the 10 people is the minimum that you would be brought down to. So say you had a very small eating establishment that only sat six, or yeah, only sat like eight people. You can have all eight there with, if you're able to still social distance. So again, the motions aren't under, on the table right now, but in this section, I do plan to entertain a motion if I can get a second later. I'd like to include all places of worship, so that they're specifically called out as being able to meet, and then strike, the no establishment shall serve more than 60 persons at one time. And I've provided that to council and I can discuss that further when we get there. I'm trying to read through if there's anything else. You know, again, let me just give some examples. So if you have an office and you're staying in your office, if you have a office building, your staff is not down to 50%. You can stay at full capacity of staff, it's just the customers coming in that you would limit to 50%. So I'll turn it over to Sue McClure while I check my notes and see if you have anything else to add to that.
Thank you. I think the mayor covered it pretty well. Where this sort of came from, first of all, this is not code orange. And this is in lieu of code orange. One of the options we were given was to go directly to code orange, which would have shut everything down. And so our suggestion was to come up with something that's going to hopefully change people's, how people are dealing with this, and not be so onerous that people will just not obey the rules. And this does include a mask requirement. So this was a, to me, this is a compromise ordinance from doing nothing to doing all. And I think this is a pretty reasonable compromise in my mind. And so the mayor and Holly Wells, our attorney, and I spent some time on this, so, anyway, the mayor covered everything, I think, pretty well.
Yeah, thank you. And I do want to say, I know there's been some discussion already, but the duration of this would be 30 days.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
30 days.
And then, one last thing is, you know, it doesn't take code orange off the table permanently. So this could get in place, and then depending on our, you know, there's a matrix to call code orange with hospital capacity, number of cases, recommendations, that could still be a future action if all the, if all the signs warrant that. So I will turn it just quickly over to the city manager and see if you have anything to add about the ordinance.
I don't have anything. Later on, I think it's appropriate that we explain what the code orange entails and how essential and what would be closed. And we have some materials to go over that, so that it's not as apparent that it's, everything's closed.
Okay.
Because it's, it's a lot less restrictive than that.
Vice Mayor McClure?
I just wanted to add, too, in reading all of the comments we got today in city email, there is a misconception that tonight we're doing code orange, and we are not. This is not that. We are not shutting everything down tonight. I mean, it would take a dramatic change of this ordinance to make that happen. So that's not what we're discussing. And some people, I think, the word was out that that was what this is. So I apologize if people didn't understand the title or something, but this is not that.
That's a good clarification.
And I would add, because I know Dr. Zink and Dr. McLaughlin are on the phone, this would be similar to the state's code yellow, code orange. And we'll get into how we did that and stuff at the end.
Okay, that's good to hear. So if there's no further comments for myself, or what I'm going to do is I'm going to open up this public hearing. Because we're in this type of venue, there's most people setting comments to be read. I believe we have upwards of 30.
Forty-five.
Forty-five comments. And I know that Forty-five comments. And I know that people will say that's a lot of comments and a lot of things to listen to in the public. I'm sure it might be painful for you, but we need to make sure that everyone is afforded the same access to council during this time and have the ability for people to make comments on their local government. I am going to help the clerk read, so I'm going to move over to the clerk's location. But I'm just also going to say that as I'm reading, I'm reading both sides. So, I don't want to be perceived as being a non-neutral party. I'm definitely a neutral party and just trying to assist with the process. So, I'll come over. Do you want to actually start it?
Yeah, I'll start it. My name is Dr. Carolyn Roloff, and I live inside the city limits. In recent weeks, there have been much discussion over mask effectiveness, as well as the perceived dangers of wearing a mask on a regular basis. As your town's pediatrician, I feel the need to make a few comments on these issues. To the question of whether or not a mask will help decrease the spread of viral illness, the answer is a resounding yes. Viruses are not self-propelled organisms with wings or legs. They often catch a ride on something else, tiny droplets from your sneezes, for instance, or the doorknob that you touch, in order to from one person to another. For precisely this reason, we teach our children to cover their mouths when they cough or their noses when they sneeze, because it can keep other people from getting sick. Wearing a mask is, in essence, a more effective elbow for you to cough in. You don't have to hope to have a free arm in order to protect those around you. The protection is already in the right place, ready to stop many of the droplets from emerge in day-to-day activities like talking or sneezing. While a mask is not 100% guaranteed that you will not infect someone else, it decreases viral movement and therefore decreases the risk of passing along infection. To the question of whether or not wearing a mask causes health risks for the general public, the answer is a resounding no. I've heard concerns from people about whether a mask decreases your oxygen levels. One citizen rightly observed that they have seen few patients with oxygen saturations around 96 with a mask on, then increased to 98 with the mask was taken off, which they put forward as proof that masks cause low oxygen levels. To doctors, an oxygen saturation of 94% is considered normal, and I view this change as meaningless. I've heard other concerns about the potential for elevated carbon dioxide levels. Surgeons wearing masks during every operation to prevent the spread of virus or bacteria from their mouths into open body cavity, yet they do not suffer from carbon dioxide toxicity. Even in high stress situations, we count on physicians en masse to be able to have their minds working as the best. This would not be possible if carbon dioxide levels rose or oxygen levels decreased meaningfully as a result of mask wearing. If you find yourself having a major breathing problem or severe anxiety while wearing a mask, I would encourage you to talk with your doctor, because that is not the norm. As a society, we would like to think that people will do the things recommended to protect our community without being forced. I would also like to believe that this is the case, and until recent weeks would have opposed a mask mandate on the grounds that many people were wearing masks already. Unfortunately, that practice has now ended. As consistent mask wearer within public buildings, I now find myself in a dwindling minority. Considering that most people are now refusing to follow the recommendations regarding mask use, I think that the city council must reconsider the implementation of mandatory mask wearing in public buildings where social distancing is not possible. Education and recommendations are clearly not enough anymore.
Where do these go? Here? Here?
North Simons. Thank you for addressing the issues happening in our city. I would like to say that I am in favor of requiring facial coverings inside buildings open to the public. It is a super simple approach that we can all take and be responsible citizens. We are talking about protecting our friends, neighbors, children, and seniors. It is a minor imposition. I don't have the fear that the government is staging a takeover of my rights by suggesting or implementing this mandate. I am confident on the city's management is operating in good faith. I find it appalling that the men and women who work to serve the public are being disrespected by customers not wearing a mask. They wear one for us. Thank you. This is from Jen Apple. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, my name is Jen Apple. I've lived in Seward for 18 years and currently living in Seward City Limits. I have a few questions for you to ponder. What happened to personal risk as being a personal choice in life? What happened to the days in America where I could choose to go to church without other people, with other people who choose to go to church, and we could choose to make that decision to gather together regardless of the size of the crowd? What happened to having freedoms in America, freedoms to choose our own risk level? Why are we trying to limit gatherings again to 20 people when people can make their own choice on whether or not to be part of a gathering? Why does the government get to decide that for us? Who gave the city the power over churches, power over our personal lives? The government wants to strip these freedoms to choose our level of risk away from us. They want to make everyone afraid of everyone else in the name of safety. Why are we breeding fear? Fear actively lowers one's immune system, one's ability to fight off any kind of bug or virus. And then, instead of actively recommending measures that will boost our natural immune system spreading time outside, camping, eating healthy, and taking good supplements, the government is trying to implement a system that actively suppresses the immune system and creates an active breeding gown for bacteria and viruses to grow and multiply in a warm and wet environment right up against our mouths. The argument I have heard for masks is that doctors wear masks all day and are fine. Yes, they do wear them now to be with patients. They wear a surgical mask, which is not the same as a fabric mask. At the end of seeing that patient, they take it off, wash their hands, and replace it with a brand-new mask before seeing a new patient. Doctors do not wear a cloth mask that they touch and fiddle with 20 times a day, taking off and putting back on the same mask with no hand washing between, shoving it in their pocket or purse on the floor of the car, and then picking it up and putting it back on their face again. We can't compare what is being put forth as a mandate for cloth masks as a comparison to what doctors do when they are with patients, changing out their surgical mask at the last hour, if not more often. Let's move on to another facet, exceptions. I know that exceptions will be written in to cover those who can't wear masks, which is appreciated and appropriate. But two thoughts. Will this cover employees who can't wear a mask for medical reasons? Also, by mandating this, you are forcing those who can't wear a mask to be put on public display as a person with health issues that keeps them from being able to wear a mask. They have to answer the questions over and over as to why they aren't wearing a mask. On another note, many bars and restaurants in Seward have chosen on their own to close or go to takeout only. This is personal responsibility in the way it should be. Government should not need to interfere with private businesses and their choices. Our town is making good and responsible choices on their own. Let's encourage that by allowing them to continue to make choices on their own rather than making mandates for them. Why would the city want to impose our own ideals on our town rather than letting businesses and individuals make their own choices? Let, ask ourselves that question. Let's ask ourselves why government wants to get even more involved in our lives than they already are. What sort of control do they think they need or deserve to have over us? Now, let's talk about the tests. Okay, yes, our test cases are rising. Of course, they are going to rise when we are testing hundreds of people suddenly in Seward indiscriminately. Do we really believe that this last week we only had four people in Seward who have tested positive had they been tested? And now we have a couple dozen positives, likely to be more as we test more. But this isn't a dozen of people who are sick and hospitalized. This is mostly people who know they are positive because they were tested at one particular point. And even in all of our cases rising, we are still at 1.5% of tests being positive per the government's briefing Tuesday night, which is well below where we were back in April and below the national average. Besides this, we are still holding steady at very low hospitalizations in depth. Please carefully consider the precedent you are setting for putting even more governmental control in place with the decisions that few of you are making tonight. You are making choices for our entire town, and that's a big responsibility to have. Please choose wisely. Please choose each one wisely.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
May I call a point of order? I just want to double-check that we, if we're going to read all of these, I don't, I don't have a problem reading all of these. I just want to make sure that we have enough time to get to Dr. Zink and the medical professionals. If anybody has to leave, I mean, we're looking at possibly an hour to, an hour and a half of comments, just comments. So, I just want to, I wanted to know if we...
So, yeah, the state's medical officials can't sit here and listen to this all night. They have a lot of duties, and I, I think we should have asked for maybe a point of order or some kind of a listing for them on the agenda. Otherwise, they're going to have to hang up.
Yeah, this is, this is Dr. Joe McLaughlin. I do need to leave at 6:30.
Okay. So, let's go to, if council has any questions for the medical folks on the phone. Vice Mayor McClure?
I have none.
Councilmember Sees, do you have any questions for the medical staff on the phone?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Osanga?
The only question I had was, where is Seward tuning today as far as cases?
I can address that. This is Leslie Phelps, Nurse Manager for Kenai Peninsula Public Health Nursing. It's an approximate, because we're still receiving some cases. Some of them are kind of in between. There's a section of epidemiology where they gather some data, and then getting to a section of nursing where we start contact tracing. However, we are at approximately 30 cases since the events of June 21, 22, 23. Is that helpful?
Yes. And is that, is that residents and non-residents, or are you, is that just residents in Seward that you're covering?
That's all since that time, yes. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions, Councilmember Osanga?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Butts?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Baklaun?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz?
Yes. My question would be for the medical professionals online, what their thoughts are and recommendations in regards to the age, 12 and under restriction for masks.
That's a great question. This is Dr. Anna Zink. I may be able to start, and then I'll hand it over to Dr. Joe McLaughlin. Currently, the CDC is recommending masks on children two and above and not put masks on children less than two. We're still learning a lot about how much children are affected by this disease and how much it's spread. It's a lot that's still not known with children in communities to research it and to learn what you can about that. Dr. McLaughlin, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Councilmember Kreitz, did you have any further questions?
My other question would be what the professional recommendation is from the physicians in regards to the opening up completely or at 50% of capacity for bars and restaurants and retail shops. Do they have a recommendation that that would be appropriate percentage, or do they recommend less or more?
So, this is Dr. Anna Zink again, and I'll start, and then Dr. McLaughlin. Any additional things that I might miss? So, it's a great question, and I really appreciate Seward's work and the tremendous response that you guys have had, the community standing up and ensuring it keeps us early and trying to be responsive to the disease and figure out the best ways to mitigate it. The basics of COVID are fairly simple, like, you know, really kind of staying at least six feet apart, wearing a mask, washing our hands, and really keeping the circle small. The implementation of it is the challenge. And so, 50%, when you are only two or three people, is very different than 50% of a big baseball stadium where everyone's super close together. And because of that, we don't have any very specific recommendations of 50%. We struggled a lot with this with the initial mandate. Do we say a certain percentage of capacity or a certain number of people? And really, it comes down to a lot of the businesses and how much they can find ways to mitigate and keep people further apart. For our initial mandate regarding restaurants, we had said having the tables at least 10 feet apart, so that when people pushed out their chair or had any sort of movement, they were at least six feet apart. Having people have an entrance and exit, again, it's really that distance based in time that made a big difference to mitigate the threat of this disease. Of course, I don't have any specifics, but it really depends on the business, Dr. McLaughlin.
No, that's great. Yeah, the big thing is keeping that fixed with distance, and what we say is six feet for 15 minutes is where you're, if you're within that six-foot radius for at least 15 minutes, you're considered to be a high-risk contact with a COVID case. So, whatever can be done in those facilities to make sure that people are not going to be within that range, that's what we aim to do.
Councilmember Kreitz, did you have further questions?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question. Dr. Zink, I know that you made a presentation to the state last night about specific to bars. Could you maybe restate some of that for us tonight here?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. So, we, as of that press conference, there may be more now, but as of that press conference, there were seven cases that were at bars during their time of infection period. That's different than an outbreak at bars, because some of the media kind of, to quote that exactly rate. We worry a lot about when people are close together and not wearing a mask, talking loudly, or sitting in clothes combinations. And those are areas where we see significant threats, what we've seen in Texas, and Arizona, and Florida, and many other states. And we are also seeing that across Alaska, both in Anchorage, and then as well as Seward. And so, as a result, I just really wanted to emphasize the fact that bars are really high-risk endeavors. The thing is, if people drink alcohol, the social distancing becomes harder and harder to follow, and we see less of that and more close bodily contact, which again, exposes the threat of this disease. Dr. McLaughlin, anything else there?
No. You know, CDC does have guidance, entitled considerations for restaurants and bars with respect to COVID-19. And they, they have a scale, a four-point scale, lowest risk, more risk, even more risk, and then highest risk. And they consider the highest risk scenarios to be onsite dining with both indoor and outdoor seating, where seating capacity not reduced and tables not spaced at least six feet apart. We know at bars, it's very difficult typically for people to maintain that six-foot distance. And oftentimes, for example, if you have a bartender who's sick, and you've got people sitting on stools at the bar, it's very, very difficult for those people to avoid exposure. So, those, for those reasons, bars tend to be very high-risk situations. And especially, as Dr. Zink had mentioned, that people are singing, especially if it's a smaller bar, and if somebody were singing and were sick, then, you know, we know that that is also a mechanism by which COVID-19 can be transmitted to others.
Okay, thank you. Administration, did you have any questions?
No, I just wish to thank them for being on the call.
Yeah, we appreciate your attention. I know it's been very helpful to local communities to have, have you review the situation and what's going on. Did you have any...
We appreciate the opportunity to come, and we really appreciate all the work we're doing, but we're only happy to come back or answer any other questions that come.
So, I guess I'll just leave one open-ended question. Did you have any comments for us or the public tonight before I get back to reading the comments?
That's a fantastic question. This is Anna Zink again. COVID is hard. The easy decisions have been made, and the hard ones are here now. We're all done with this. This is all frustrating, and we wish this was all over. But unfortunately, this disease is incredibly contagious. It's very humbling to watch these cases and how quickly they can spread between person to person. And unfortunately, we're really seeing in the lower 48, now getting supply chain limitation, hospitals becoming overwhelmed. It's important to remember that it does take a while to see those effects in the hospitals and hospitalized patients. And that's why we really appreciate testing widely, testing broadly, and doing what we can. I think it's important to remember that it isn't economy or health, it's economy and health. If we have healthy employees and if we have healthy patrons, we have a lot more going on. And so, if we can do simple steps to be able to mitigate the disease, we can keep a lot more open, and we can move together as a state in as many ways as possible. So, I really appreciate the people's time and patience and energy dealing with a very challenging issue.
Great. Is there anyone else on the line that would like to have any thoughts? I'm not kicking you off the line. It sounds like everyone's time is very valuable, but I just want to give you a chance before I get back to public comments.
Yeah, this is Dr. Joe McLaughlin. Just want to say how much we really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all today and be a part of this meeting. And please feel free to invite us again if you have follow-up questions, either for another city council meeting or in some other venue. We're always happy to participate in dialogue. And there's a lot to be learned about COVID-19 as we go forward. We still don't know everything there is to know about this disease. And so, we are very happy to share the new information as it comes along in the days and weeks ahead.
Great, thank you. Last call. Anyone else out there? Great. Okay, I'll get back to public comments. Oh, this is a call one. A call. Do you want me to use it? I don't know how to use it. Okay. So, the next one is a phone call, and it's, we're going to call Lori Landstrom.
Hi, this is Lori.
Hi, Lori. You're on the phone with council. We're starting the, your public hearing time. If you could say your name, inside or outside city limits, and then your testimony.
Absolutely. Good evening. Lori Landstrom here. I live outside the city limits, but I work inside the city limits. I am, sorry, I'm getting some feedback. Hang on just one second. Okay, I'm sorry. I understand the clock is still running. But I work inside the city limits. I am a concerned resident and a local healthcare provider. Thank you for working to protect our health and economy in this town we call home. I... I fully support this ordinance. I fully support most everything in it. You heard all the reasons why last night and I'm not going to repeat, last week, and I'm not going to repeat them tonight. I would ask that you consider amending this ordinance in a couple of sections. Emergency regulation number two, facial coverings. I would ask that you consider lowering the exempt age from 12 to four. I believe elementary age children should wear face coverings. And if their parents start with them now, perhaps they'll be more compliant should face coverings be required this fall for school to be back in session in the school buildings. Considering today's additional seven new positive cases and the growing number of positive cases, I would ask that you close all indoor dining for at least seven days, allowing takeout only, curbside pickup. Emergency regulation number five covers this. Since people can be contagious before they develop symptoms, I feel it would be best to temporarily stop all indoor dining. This measure would allow us to get a more accurate count on the number of cases in Seward. Every day, another local business announces that they are temporarily closing. As more and more local businesses have employees who test positive, we realize that COVID-19 has reached many places and businesses in our town. This coupled with the lag time from exposure to reliably testing negative or positive, we need to slow this down now and carefully consider the reopening strategy. Please consider these changes. Please help to protect the health and economy of Seward with a significant temporary shutdown. Thank you for your time and your service.
Great, thank you for your comments. Did I do it? Okay. Next is Meredith Griffith. My comment is as follows. I support the city of Seward acting to help stop the spread of coronavirus in town and am writing in support of the actions contained in the emergency ordinance being debated. Both government, Governor Dunleavy and the CDC and the World Health Organization are now all recommending masks as a way to slow the spread of the virus. A temporary return to capacity limits at bars and restaurants will hopefully prevent the other clusters of cases as happened recently at a couple of local bars here. I will add that the city should take into consideration that some campground users may be seasonally employed in town and if not in-state home to return to. The city should continue to allow campgrounds to house people in this situation. I would also recommend that the city, in lieu of closing a campground entirely, consider returning to the blocking off every other space social distancing strategy that was in place in the city campgrounds up until very recently. I think, I thank the council for their work to ensure the health of the community and citizens in this extremely difficult time. Next is Angela Hammer. Dear City Council, public health orders can only be issued in a public health emergency. Any third grader can tell you that the emergency, if there ever was a valid one, has expired long ago. We are no longer in an emergency phase and that was four months ago. We are in a recovery phase, even a rebuilding phase. Why is the state, city and counties using words such as resilience roadmap, gag me, phases, stages, et cetera? New talking points questions. Methods of sending a few emails, each one with a question. Why are you calling this an emergency when according to the law, there is no emergency? Show me the law that your actions are based on. Do not refer me to the CDC or state guidelines. I want to see the legal citation. This emergency was declared over four months ago. We are in a recovery and rebuilding state. Show me the law that your actions are based on. Do not refer me to the CDC or the state guidelines. I want to see a legal citation. We know that you are extending this emergency to get relief funding. That means you are misrepresenting the material information for gain while intentionally harming the electorate through these onerous measures. This is the definition of fraud and fraud is a penalty, is punishable by a prison sentence. Are you willing to risk a felony by continuing these unlawful actions? Are you aware that no public servant has any legal authority, nor do you, to compel any individual to engage in individual health behavior? Laws are what compel behavior. No public servant may make law, only an emergency health order can be issued in an emergency. Show me the law that your actions are based on. Do not refer me to the CDC or state guidelines. I want to see the legal citation. Calling this as an emergency is like declaring obesity an emergency and directing all individuals to immediately limit their calorie intake as set by the government. Whether or not wearing a mask prevents the spread of illness is not the point. Even if wearing a mask extended one's lifespan to 120 years, it is still unlawful for any public servant to require any individual to engage in any individual health behavior. Show me the law that states otherwise. Do not refer me to the CDC or state guidelines. I want to see the legal citation. Thank you, Angela Hammer. Okay, next is Bruce Sledge, senior. Okay. In regards to the COVID ordinance 2020 008, temporarily adopting city council emergency regulations ordering the closure of city owned campgrounds prohibiting gatherings of more than 20 persons, requiring facial coverings inside buildings open to the public and limiting eating establishment bars and retail stores to 50% capacity indoors to respond to the rapid increase of Corona 19 cases within the city of Seward. I believe the opposite operative words here are temporary and emergency. The lack of infections in Seward during the emergency measures taken earlier this year, the drastic increase almost immediately after the reopening and the resulting mass invasion on our town and campground should be enough of an indicator that social distancing was a useful tool that wasn't taken seriously enough at this time and is still not being considered beneficial by a select view present, select few presently. Being a member of the over 60 community, I personally rely on the use of a mask and count on considerations of others to wear one as the first line of defense in the fight of COVID-19. I applaud the idea of putting in place an ordinance, closing the campgrounds, restricting of social gatherings and requiring the wearing of face masks in public places such as grocery stores, gas stations and courtroom proceedings where avoidance is not an option. The problem with this will be in the enforcement of this ordinance due to the politicization and governmental conspiracy theories that are running rampant through the community. One solution as far as the political aspect would be for the party leaders to step up and encourage social distancing and the wearing of facial masks, which the guarantee the measures are temporary. Due to the actual emergency, these measures will be rescinded when infectious rates start to go down again and after the vaccine has been developed and administered to the general public. This is not a lot, there is not a lot that can be done to address conspiracy theorists' concerns. One of the concerns involves the carrying of land handguns and the laws wearing a mask while doing so. The idea of a concealed carry that no one is supposed to know the person carrying the weapon is in fact armed, so the anonymity of the mask shouldn't be an issue as opposed to the person openly carrying and wearing a mask. I guess my point here is that with either person concealed or open, the fact that they are trusted to carry a weapon in the first place should be reason enough to suspend any mask wearing restrictions for the duration. The criminal element will carry a weapon regardless of what rules are placed upon them. I hope that by offering this idea of working with each other and assurances that there are no plans of Second Amendment right infringements, we can get the infection numbers back under some semblance of control. Respectfully, Bruce Sledge. Next is Tim Mullet. City Council of Seward, you are a disappointment. Because of your lack of leadership to the correct fact base and scientifically supported action to enact policies that would prevent the spread of COVID in our small community, you have exposed the families you are sworn to protect to a virus that is known to kill and create severe irreparable damage to our organ system. A virus that is known to affect all ages at varying degrees of harm. This is your fault. Your decisions have made this outbreak possible. If you had simply taken the appropriate measures to protect your community and lead by example, then the people in Seward and visitors who come here would not have behaved as if the virus had somehow disappeared, enabling them to engage in high risk activities. But the example you have made was one that everyone was made to follow and now we have more COVID-19 cases than we had for nearly three months. You chose to follow ignorance and feelings rather than facts or simply well supported and recommended actions from experts. You took appropriate action when this pandemic started, when the scare was real for everyone. With only two cases, we shut things down, closed our city buildings sheltered in place and Seward led the state and perhaps the country by our example on how to flatten the curve. We were safe. Our elderly were safe, our children were safe. But summer came and you, like so many ignorant, money driven politicians, you followed the fools to open everything and proclaimed, "The pandemic is over, we won." You couldn't even pass a policy to enforce a simple act of wearing masks. Simply mandating everyone to wear a mask would have reduced, if not completely prevented this. But you voted your feelings and the groundless claims that protecting the health of human beings goes against some definition of civil liberty. Now here we are, COVID cases rising daily, only a few hospital beds to care for the sick to come. Maybe we send them to Anchorage or Sedona to induce more stress on their healthcare system. Your actions to this point have failed us. You are all failures. This emergency ordinance will not get us there. It will not keep us safe. Shutting down city buildings, eliminating gatherings over 10 persons, mandating masks in all public buildings, shut down restaurants, why am I writing this? You know what to do. We did at the beginning of all this. We need to do it again. Don't follow your feelings. They got you nowhere. Follow facts, listen to experts who have spent their lives studying these pandemics. Disappointed. Timothy Mullet, PhD. Alex Von Thomasi. I am writing to talk about the dangers of mandates in general. I work at Safeway and I can tell you that after spiking cases this week, that virtually everyone who comes in the store from town is conscientious and is wearing masks or maintaining social distance while they shop or both. I have been wearing a mask voluntarily virtually everywhere and I have gone for months now. Oh, where I have gone for months now, excuse me. Not because someone forced me, but because I grew up in this town. I have seen some real ugliness from my fellow town folk in the last few weeks though. Threats of fine, citizen Gestapo and the added stress of working, forcing the local police to enforce this. I am sure the city lawyer will agree with me. This sort of drastic overreach is just going to open up the city to constitutional lawsuits. Vote no in this special session. Just recommend them. Hand them out to pass or buy, offer a face cover that'll comply without restricting breathing such as plastic face shades, anything that shows you have a modicum of respect left for people's rights. Thank you for your time. Okay, this is from Kenneth, I'm sorry, Federico. Hopefully that's right. Ladies and gentlemen on the City of Seward City Council, I am happy you are taking public comments. I understand the concern for the, of the COVID-19 problems. I can see having limited seating at bars and restaurants. That would be for the safety of all concerned. My question to you is why close all city campgrounds? These campgrounds have a lot more than six feet between them. Except for the RV parking, most, if not all, are about 20 to 25 feet apart from each other. What you are essentially doing is telling all people wanting to enjoy the scenery and fishing opportunities in Seward not to come. You are not welcome. We can all be safe if six to 10 feet distancing between people is observed. Combining camping and restaurants in the same breath is not doing justice to those who want to come. Have we not suffered financially already without a needless reaction by this vote or proclamation? We are all in this together and essentially you are telling me the rest of Alaska to, telling the rest of Alaska to stay home. I am sure a few businesses located in Seward would agree with me. Thank you for your time, but please think on this. You are going to kill some local businesses if this passes. Ken Federico. Next on the, next is Sarah Brechner. Dear City Council, I find myself spending yet another beautiful Alaska summer evening inside writing a letter in order to stand up for my civil liberties instead of out enjoying them. It is disheartening and vexing activity to say the least. We, the people of Seward, are educated, thinking people. We can and do educate ourselves about COVID-19 and the latest most current health concerns. Much can be learned. One thing to be learned for certain is that the information regarding the severity, danger and risk of COVID is nothing less than contradictory. How can one small governing body propose masks policy based on contradictory information? May I suggest that COVID-19 is not the single threat that faces our community. The result of the mandate that regulates and restricts businesses will result in the loss of jobs to our fellow citizens, friends and neighbors. Those struggling to make mortgage or rent payments, pay bills and put food on the table will be in desperate situations. Sewardites who have sunk their life savings into the dream of owning their own business are at the risk of losing all and these mandates coming down after only one month of stunted summer earnings will be the nail in their coffin. I urge you to allow the business owners of Seward to make their own decisions regarding the operating of their businesses and allow citizens and tourists the choice of whether or not to frequent them. We are free, independent people and should be allowed to make our own choices. Those who are strong, healthy and desire to work have the right to do so. Our elderly, vulnerable and cautious also have the right to stay home and take as many precautions as they desire. Ultimately, the closing of our economy will also negatively affect our most vulnerable as the working force will be financially unable to serve or give assistance to them. Please allow citizens to exercise their rights and freedoms as Americans and pursue their livelihoods. We are not foolish and unthinking children who need someone to think and make decisions for us. We are people, businesses and voice of Seward Alaska and her very existence and success rests on us. You as our city council have been elected to serve the citizens according to their concerns and not to further your own personal agenda. Please listen to the voices of the people of Seward and respond accordingly. Please care for us as if it was your own livelihood at stake. I ask of you not cripple Seward by restricting her people with further mandates. Thank you for taking time to read my letter and hear my concerns. I sign this with a heart full to bursting with pride and love for my own town, my state and my country. Sincerely, Sarah Brechner. Next is Doyle Brechner. Wow, here we are again. This is now the third attempt by Seward City Council to pass a face mandate, except this time you have decided to throw a couple more economy stifling mandates in for good measure. My tone is coming off a little bit harsh. It is because I am frustrated. It feels like you just don't want to hear the wishes of the majority of Seward residents. At the last emergency meeting, you heard folks comment regarding your face mask mandate at a rate of two against it for everyone for it. Why do I have to keep writing letters begging the city council to not take away basic human freedoms, American freedoms? The freedom to choose what actions to take or not to take to protect the health and safety of myself and my family? The freedom to enjoy browsing in Seward shops mask free without becoming paranoid that I may get closer than six feet to another person? If I see a friend, I should be able to shake their hand and have a mask free conversation if we both desire to do so. I realize that there could potentially be a time and place for restricting individual freedom such as you are suggesting. However, you would need to have an extremely compelling reason. The quote COVID-19 pandemic doesn't even come close to being a compelling reason. I haven't heard of even one person needing hospitalization in Seward as a result of this so-called Seward emergency and certainly no desks. I understand the desire for a municipality to declare a situation to be a quote emergency in order to secure, secure certain state and federal funds, however dishonest that may be. But now you are moving past a purely administrative function to direct intrusion into the business and personal lives of the people of this town. Before I talk about the national and worldwide numbers, I want to state one simple fact. Please listen to this and take it in. We are declaring that we are in an emergency health crisis in Seward, Alaska, when not one single solitary resident of Seward has had severe health effects of the COVID sickness. None. I am not saying that the disease doesn't exist. I'm saying the emergency doesn't exist in Seward. We are all adults who understand by now that COVID-19 is and the harmful effects that it can have on person, even the possibility of death. We all deal with other realities every day that could cause death. We negotiate around the risk with the decisions we make. Those of us who are rational do not panic over the chance of dying in a car wreck, even though we knowingly live on the most dangerous highway in America. Just like someone infected with COVID, a drunk or overly tired driver in the opposite lane can easily prevent, present with no outward symptoms and the worst outcome may happen. How do most of us respond to the reality that we may die in a car through no fault of our own? Do we stop driving or do we calculate the low risk of dying against the vast improvements to our quality of life that brings, that driving brings and make the decision to get behind the wheel again? We do not need or want a few positions overpower to make us, to over, over us to make our decision for us. COVID has now been blamed for just over half a million deaths worldwide. The following list is a list of things that have cost more lives in 2020 so far that COVID. This list is taken from arworldindata.com. The list is in order from least to most deaths, but all have killed more people in 2020 than COVID. Tuberculosis, kidney diseases, road vehicles, liver diseases, diabetes, diarrheal diseases, neonatal disorders, digestive diseases, dementia, lower respiratory infections non-COVID, respiratory diseases non-COVID, cancers, cardiovascular diseases. Cardiovascular disease all by itself has killed about nine million people in 2020 so far. This is the number one killer, has taken 18 times more lives than COVID in the same amount of time. All told, of every thousand people have died in 2020 so far, 17 of them have been because of COVID. Seventeen per thousand. Does it sound like something to you that calls for a panic and overreaction? If it does, you should be freaked out of your minds about so much more than COVID. But then you would realize that these worldwide numbers are just average and that Seward has been blessed by providence to be so much less, so much less than average. I hope that you see why most folks want you to just stop already. Sincerely, Doyle Brechner. Next is Margaret Minkin. Okay. The following is the current recommendation by the CDC as of July 1st, 2020 regarding COVID-19 worldwide pandemic. CDC recommends that people wear cloth face coverings in public settings and when around people who don't live in your household, especially when other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. Cloth face coverings may help people who have COVID-19 from spreading the virus to others. Cloth face coverings are most likely to reduce the spread of COVID-19 when they are widely used by people in public settings. Cloth face coverings should not be worn by children under the age of two or anyone who has trouble breathing, is unconscious, incapacitated or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. Cloth face coverings are recommended as a simple barrier to help present respiratory droplets from traveling into the air and onto people when the person wearing the cloth face covering coughs, sneezes, talks or raises their voice. This is called source control. This recommendation is based on what we know about the role respiratory droplets play in the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19, paired with emerging evidence from clinical and laboratory studies that shows cloth face coverings reduce the spread of droplets when worn over the nose and mouth. COVID-19 spreads mainly among people who are in close com, contact with one another within about six feet so that the use of cloth face coverings is particularly important in settings where people are close to each other or where social distancing is difficult to maintain. These recommendations have been the recommendations for a month. Seward has already tried the honor system and allowed each individual to make responsible decisions for Seward's public health. This has failed. At any given day, you can go inside Safeway and other businesses in town and see people not wearing masks while standing less than six feet away from other individuals. This community needs to show support, needs support from city council to keep us safe by adhering to the current CDC guidelines. We must slow the spread of this virus as quickly as possible before our small hospital is overwhelmed. And remember, it will not just be the COVID-19 patient, patients that will have a delay in care. It could be anyone that needs to see a nurse or doctor. That could be you, your child, your best friend, your parent. I would recommend to close with a statement from Dr. Fossey. Dr. Fossey is a longtime chief of laboratory, um, yeah, I can't say that, many regulation. He has made many contribu, contributions to basic and clinical research on the pathogenesis and treatment of immune-medicated and infectious diseases. He helped pioneer the field of human, yeah, by making important, basic scientific observations that underpin the current understanding of the regulation of the human immune response. In other words, he has an understanding of what is actually happening to our bodies with this virus. On June 30th, 2020, he stated, "We cannot forget that what was thought to be unimaginable turned out to be the reality we're facing now. Thank you for your time and please keep Seward safe by passing a mask mandate." Margaret Minkin, registered nurse. Okay, Marilyn Barnwell. I support emergency ordinance 2020-008. I spend a lot of my time in the boat harbor area and have been sadly disappointed in the lack of safety measures to COVID-19 taken by visitors. As an example, when shopping in the stores in the boat harbor, the only person wearing a mask is me. This is happening over and over when I am buying boat parts or fishing supplies to the point where I no longer buy locally. The lack of safety measures continues as tourists embark on the fishing charters, transport, or tours. We are sending the wrong message from the start. I wonder if visitors are thinking, "I'm on vacation." I've noticed the same circumstance in all Seward shops I've visited in the month of June, even though signs on the door asking patrons to wear masks. In addition, when I asked a shop owner why she didn't, why she didn't ask people to wear masks, she stated that she had, but people ignored her request. It is my opinion that an ordinance would give backbone to a shop owner or employee when they say no, when they say to a noncompliant patron, "Seward has an ordinance. We are requiring face masking and social distancing." Thus, the ordinance would take the onus off the worker. As for business owners, I would like them to know that they are losing business when they aren't requiring their employees to wear masks. When I see a lack of safety measures, I don't shop locally and I buy online instead. When talking with friends and family, many others are sadly doing the same thing. Typically, I would buy locally, but not now I have to think, "I don't know these people. I wonder if they've been exposed to COVID-19." Please pass emergency ordinance 2020-008. We need to send the right message to our visitors to keep all of us safe. Robert Thomas. My name is Robert Thomas. I'm a resident of the City of Seward. I think it is crazy to close the city campgrounds in response to this emergency. It is a bit like a farmer who had a fox killing chickens. Farmer immediately ran out, gathered up all his horses, and locked them in a barn, then patting himself on his back and said, "Now the chickens are safe." Crazy, right? This outbreak is centered around activities occurring in bars in our town. If something needs to be closed to respond to our current emergency, it would be bars. It is not unexpected that in bars where there's singing, where there is singing, that this outbreak occurred. At St. Peter's, we have cautiously opened for Sunday services. One of our most important mitigation steps to keep people safe is to not allow singing. Everyone knows or should know that singing causes a huge spread of rep, respiratory droplets. The most appropriate step to respond to this outbreak would be to ban karaoke and live vocal entertainment in bars. Let's address the actual problem here and not just do something that will have no effect just to be doing something. Thank you, Robert Thomas. Please read. Craig and Katie Turnbull. We support the passage of 2020-008 and thank you for taking another look at it. We support our community and attempt to make it safe for all the people who live here to maintain our health, including our children. The CDC recommends face coverings for children over two years of age. Teaching our children to respect this virus now may help them get back to school a whole lot sooner and safer. We believe our young children should not be exempt from protection. Change the age from 12 years old to four years old. There are some in our community who have been very vocal against any kind of facial covering, many recommending those of us who want facial come, coverings mandated to just stay home. We have stayed home, not gone out to dinner or met up with our friends, only felt somewhat comfortable going to the few stores in Seward where employees are wearing face coverings and more. Now it's time to say, if you don't want to cover your mouth and nose in an effort to contain the virus, just stay home. Thank you. Craig and Katie Turnbull. Allison Pike. Dear council members, my husband and I do not support this emergency ordinance. We feel that local businesses are capable of implementing measures that best protect them, their workers, and community. Quite a few have already done so, whether it be closing down temporary or requiring masks. And most, these should be recommendations, not mandates. Had these measures been in place earlier, I don't believe it would have changed anything. Since we didn't have any active cases, we had a sense of complaint, complacency, so people weren't being as vigilant as necessary. I think we've all had a crash course in who our close contacts are. The Alaska Division of Public Health and said you generally need to be in close prolonged contact with a sick person to get infected. Close prolonged contact doesn't include passing someone in Safeway or standing six feet from someone in line at the post office, or even shopping near someone at one of the shops around town. Contact chasing isn't concerned about the places or interactions if they're, if they weren't prolonged in less than six feet from someone. These aren't the places you are most at risk. The powers that be have always said mask wearing isn't a substitute for social distancing, so let, so that lets me know social distancing is a first line of defense, not wearing a mask. Stop the government overreach and let city businesses decide for themselves how best to move forward. Thank you for your time. William and Allison Pike. Kevin Lane. Hello, this email is in regards to the special meeting this evening, July 1st, to address COVID-19 concerns from the recent spike in cases. I would like my comments to be emailed, oh, but read aloud, sorry about that. Closing the campgrounds. I feel that closing them completely is a bit overboard. I know we recently started allowing 100% capacity. Perhaps we can move back to the previous distance, distancing in the campground. Gathering of 20 or more people. I am fine with this, but not sure how this would work in our restaurant. If we are able to seat 50% capacity, that would be approximately 40 people. Would 20 people mandates supersede the 50% capacity? We can and do distance our tables. Is that a factor? Face coverings inside public access areas. Why I'm typically against government mandates for such manners, it seems people cannot or will not take simple measures to keep their community safe. I support this order. Restaurant bars at 50% capacity. As a business owner with two restaurants in town, I fully support this proposal. Even if we, even if we concede at 50% capacity, we will probably choose to offer takeout curbside delivery for the next one to two weeks, depending on results from the la, latest round of testing. I would encourage other establishments to do the same. On this subject and all the proposals, a concern would be for the en, enforcement of the mandates. While I believe that the majority of the businesses in town care for community safety versus profits, we all know there are others that are more self-centered and may or may not follow these mandates. Will there be penalties? Who will be in charge of enforcement? Thank you to all the city workers and council. You are dealing with hornets' nest of feelings, false information, and selflessness out there. I certainly do not envy your jobs. Thank you, Kevin Lane, chef-owner of the cookery. Uh, next is Tamara, sorry, Tamara.
Filippovich.
Filippovich, thank you. Dear City Council, my name is Tamara Filippovich and I live within city limits at two, I won't read your address, sorry about that. I would like to express my support for the emergency ordinance 2020-008, including two amendments to the Regulation 2 regarding the replacement of the world cloth with facial and reduce the exemption age from 12 to four years old. Our community performed admirably between March 17th and the end of May to help stop the spread of COVID in an effort to ensure that all of our citizens, friends, and families remain safe and healthy during these unprecedented times. In light of how June unfolded, with the lack of government oversight and the recent community outbreak, I urge you to pass ordinance 2020-008 and do everything in your power to help ensure that Seward remains healthy and safe community for everyone. Thank you for your time in Seward, and time and service. Tamara. Uh, next is Carol Griswold. Dear Council and Administration, Emergency Regulation Number Three. I am very concerned about the proposed closure of municipal campgrounds. Closing the campgrounds will not stop campers from coming to Seward. Without management, visitors will create chaos by camping everywhere for free. Seward will lose significant income that helps pay for services that must continue, including restrooms, porta-potties, trash collection, mowing, and maintenance. These, the campgrounds are not COVID-19 hotspots. They are outdoors and it is easy to control campsite physical distancing. Please keep the city campgrounds open, maintain the 20%, 20 feet spacing, and collect the fees. Delete the reservation system to first come, first served to reduce administrative headaches. Emergency Regulation Number Two, I support requiring facial coverings in buildings open to the public. This order should specifically include requiring employees of such buildings to wear facial coverings as well. Why was the age for exempting facial coverings changed from under two years old to 12 years old and under? This is not the CDC guidelines. Please be consistent with CDC and change the facial covering requirement to exclude two years old and under, not 12. Change cloth covering to facial covering and be consistent throughout the ordinance. The recent outbreak centered on bars. As in other cities, close the bars. It is apparent that it is not possible to maintain adequate physical distancing or wear masks inside a bar even with the reduced capacity. Thank you for your attention to this very ser, serious is, issue. Carol Griswold, City Limits. Chris Danzel. My name is Chris Danzel and I live right in the middle of town. Please don't close our town. We've already been doing so much to keep the spread in a minimum. The campground is already at half capacity. Please keep it that way. At least we can get some money coming into town and still be safe about it. I am one that doesn't think that masks are necessary, but I am now even wearing one in public places to make others feel safer. Please think before you limit us anymore. We're not going to get away with this, but we are dealing with it very well already. Carol Souza. As a past bartender and a resident of Seward for 46 years, I think opening bars was a big mistake and opening restaurants to sit at tables to eat was a very big mistake. I also feel that wearing masks when in close contact with others is an important part of containing COVID-19 virus. They offer a certain amount of protection for the wearer, but mostly with those they share space with, and they keep us reminded that we are in a pandemic. Therefore, I would like to see masks mandatory within city limits when other people are present. You are welcome to read this comment. Thank you, Carol Souza. Julian Ryan. Hello, below are my citizen comments regarding tonight's emergency ordinance meeting that I hope to be read out loud at the meeting. I'm a registered nurse and resident of Seward, Alaska. I'm pleading with the City of Seward to make it mandatory for individuals to use face masks when in public places. I work with a vulnerable population of patients in an environment that would be devastated if COVID-19 entered its facility. The medical staff works tirelessly to prevent the introduction of this virus into the facility in which we work at. However, other staff members have extreme aversion to wearing masks both at work and out in the community. This puts not only the population in our care at risk for contracting the virus, but also other staff members. The CDC recommends face coverings in the public as it lowers the risk of transmitting the virus to less than 2%. However, when this recommendation is only encouraged, people still do not ask them to protect, people still do not do what is asked of them to protect others, which is made apparent in our town's current outbreak. Unless masks are mandatory in public places, people will continue to not wear them. Our community is small in Seward. Our medical resources are extremely limited. Seward's limited resources and staff have the potential to be crushed, devastated by the current outbreak and continuing of the pandemic. In order to ensure the safety of others and protect everyone, masks should be mandatory while in public. This is an extremely low cost and low risk intervention, intervention the city can take to protect those living and traveling to our town. It will help to keep our economy open and prevent future shutdowns of businesses. Other cities and states already have mask mandates in place and it's proven to be effective by greatly decreasing transmission rates. Incruch has made this mandate already. Seward should follow suit. Failure to do so will only put our citizens and travelers directly in harm's way. Citizens rely on their local government to do the right things, including protecting their health during global pandemic. Do not fail the people of Seward and let this virus do more damage than it already has. And in the future, do not wait to have another large outbreak to mandate such a thing. Follow the guidance of the CDC and the World Health Organization to make choices that only protect others. Do not let politics interfere with the protection and well-being of others. Do the right thing here, mandate masks. Failure to do so may end with the death of citizens of Seward. Is that what the city wants on their conscience as a government whose duty it is to protect its citizen? Mandate the masks. Thank you, Julian Ryan. Uh, CJ Ray. Dear Mayor and City Council, my name is CJ Ray and I am a resident of the City of Seward. Council, thank you for your tireless role in the pursuit of keeping our small community safe during the current outbreak of COVID-19 in Seward. Thank you also to the individuals who are self-identifying such that the community can be more informed about who needs to be tested. Thank you to all the businesses who are looking at their operations, safety, and closing or altering business as necessary to protect the community. Thank you to all the medical personnel and essential workers who are working amid the stress of the current outbreak. I am in support of 20, ordinance 2020-008. I am supportive of our whole community, everyone in it. I would like to ask two issues be brought up and examined thoroughly. One, I'm willing to be able to curtail all of my activities except two. I must occasionally buy groceries and I must occasionally go to the po, post office. The ordinance states masks should be worn if six feet of distance cannot be maintained. I would like to see masks mandated for grocery stores and the post office. To me, it is obvious six feet of distance can't be maintained in these locations, but some may think it is possible and accidentally endanger the essential employees who work in those spaces and community members who must frequent them. This may mean just clarifying what you have already written. Two, in the ordinance it states face coverings for those 12 and older. I think the children of a much younger age are able to understand and wear a mask. I would defer to any recommendation by principals and teachers, but suggest that the ages between four to eight would be where the mandate should fall. Thank you for considering masking, mandating masks in these ways. I wear a mask to protect you. Please wear a mask to protect me. Sincerely, CJ Ray. Okay, this is a phone call. Let's see if I can do it. Is it that button? Okay, just dial it. So, nine.
Hello, this is Kara Reamer.
Hello, you're on the phone with council for the public hearing item. Just state your name and inside or outside city limits and then provide your testimony, please.
Thank you. This is Kara Reamer, inside city limits. And first of all, I wanted to thank all of the council members for your service and hard work on behalf of the community. There are a lot of people in this town that appreciate what you are doing for us each and every day. I'm not going to talk about masks. I hope you're okay with that. So just moving on, most of my comments are as president and CEO of the Alaska Sea Life Center, and I just want to, as, as some background to my comments, talk about how we have been operating since reopening. We've been operating as we feel fairly conservatively. We're, we have self-limited visitation to 15% of our normal capacity. Our staff have been instructed to never be within six feet of another person unless that they are doing a very specific approved animal protocol where six foot distancing is not possible. And staff and visitors must wear masks. I said the word. Unless they are in a room by themselves or have an exemption. So we, as an organization, are in general very supportive of anything the council is doing to protect, protect our community. I wanted to specifically address the lay-down amendments, which I understand are not on the table yet, but they are important to us. the table yet, but they are important to us. So we do have volunteers staying in the campground, and so the first strikeout is important and seems to make sense for those workers who are living there for the summer. The second strikeout is extremely important to us. Without that strikeout, we would be limited to less than 5% of our capacity, which is effectively an empty building. So I definitely support those lay-down amendments. What I'm really looking for from council tonight, and why I'm going to be listening to the entire meeting, is that I'm looking for guidance on the intent of council with this ordinance overall. The ordinance as presented in the packet appears to be a mix of very strict rules and fairly open policies. And let me be clear, I'm not making a value judgment when I say strict or open. I'm just comparing the distinction. For instance, the masking requirement and the total closure of the campground is very strict. They're stricter than the state of Alaska Phase 1 reopening guidelines. However, the 50% capacity for most businesses seems fairly open, as that is equivalent to a Phase 2 reopening. So as I look at the landscape, I'm struggling to understand what makes sense for the Alaska Sea Life Center. On one hand, it appears that we are operating in a way that is more conservative than would be required, so we don't need to make any adjustments. On the other hand, it appears that total closure of the campground, an outdoor environment that appears to have a lower public health risk than other locations, would imply we should close to keep people from coming to Seward at all. So that's something that I'm very much looking forward to your conversation to understand what your intent is as a council. On the... My personal feeling, not Alaska Sea Life Center, is that campgrounds are safe at 50% capacity. You've heard several comments to that effect tonight already. If your intention is not to close down tourism, I encourage you to make a change to the ordinance to allow camping at 50%. My evening walks through the campground areas, I probably do that three days per week when I'm on a loop around town. I have been observing what is happening there, as well as what's in the harbor. In general, I feel safe walking through the campground, certainly safer than in any indoor location at a 50% capacity. And I don't know if any of the public health officials will still be on the phone after the public comment, but if so, I would encourage council to ask one of these professionals about their opinion of public health risks of campground. That is all I have. I wish you luck, and there will be some of us just... I'm feeling for you all, and I thank you again for your service to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Brendan Horseth. Hi Brenda... Okay, sorry. Members of the city coun... Oh, Brendan Horseth, inside city limits. Members of the city council, I support emergency ordinance 2020-08. In light of the recent outbreak in Seward, I feel enacting this ordinance is reasonably precaution... Reasonable precaution, excuse me. I would ask that the council consider the following two amendments to council emergency regulation number two, based on the comments which occurred last week. First, change the mask exemption age from 12 years old to four years old to properly protect our elementary schools. And second, remove the word cloth and replace with facial, so it reads mask or facial covering. I've heard a bit of misinformation over the past week, and I would like to take this time to remind those who are listening and council of the current relevant CDC guidelines on COVID-19, which are as follows. You could spread COVID-19 to others even if you do not feel sick. The cloth face covering is meant to protect other people in case you are infected. Everyone should wear a cloth face covering in public settings and went around people who don't live in your household, especially when the other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. Cloth face covering should be not placed on young children under the age of two or anyone who has trouble breathing, or is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. Do not use a face mask meant for healthcare worker. Currently surgical masks and N95 respirators are critical supplies that should be reserved for healthcare workers and other first responders. Continue to keep six feet between yourselves and others. A cloth face covering is not a substitute for social distancing. Despite last week's outbreak, we have done a wonderful job as far as the community during this crisis. Nobody is perfect, and hindsight is 20/20. Let's keep up the good work and help council... Or help Seward stay healthy by enacting this emergency ordinance. Thank you, Brendan Horseth. Mark Colstead. Dear Ms. Mayor, members of the city council and Seward community, thank you for the opportunity to have the city clerk read my comments for emergency ordinance 2020-008 out loud. It is unfortunate we are dealing with the health and financial impact of COVID-19. News is assimilated in a small community of Seward in many ways, but the city clerks posting of, "In response to the rapid increase of COVID-19 cases within the city of Seward", and my other sources, "After approximately 300 recent tests, we have less than 10 new cases in Seward." My understanding of this new emergency order is that it is being considered to protect the public from an increase in hospitalizations and deaths. What if you, the city council, are wrong? Do you intend to reimburse Seward businesses for their loss of revenue? With the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city is and will lose from the head in bed taxes, do you intend on giving property tax relief to the Seward community? Do you intend on abating increases in the electrical utility controlled by the city of Seward? Have you... And how will you secure the necessary funds to keep the city of Seward out of bankruptcy if your decisions for the city are in error? If the COVID-19 virus hazard, as appears from death statistics nationwide, lost its prior potency, becoming one of the many current coronaviruses responsible for the common cold, we do not have the hospitalization in desk, please take the responsibility for a wrong decision as well as for a right decision. In respect to requiring facial coverings inside buildings open to the public, I am in agreement as long as it is... If social distancing cannot be maintained. I also have a concern about the city-owned campgrounds being closed as it relates to sanitation and enforcement. We have a small jail. Citations are not going to be good for Seward's image, and we have a limited police force. Please take into consideration the nation's current social unrest and any unintended consequences of your decision in relation to closing the campgrounds and any unforeseen sanitation issues. Thank you again. Mark Colstead, Hotel Seward. Nate Smith. I'm writing this letter to the council tonight for what I believe will be a knee-jerk reaction to our increased number of cases. I am proud to say that the businesses of Seward who responded in a quick manner may have brought to our attention something very important, and that something is the fact that they were able to identify a problem, make the public aware, and execute a plan all on their own without the guidance of this council. I've seen the reopening plans online and commend them for making these type of decisions once again on all their own without the advice of this council. Businesses should be left to themselves to come up with plans that not only follow the state guidelines, but their employees' safety as well. Then I got online and see everyone chastising council for not stepping up and forcing the businesses to do the right thing. I am sorry, but these businesses did do the right thing at a huge cost. My question to the council is this: If a person is known to be in contact with a positive case and goes and gets tested, then goes back to work for three days only to find out they are... They too are positive, should they be held accountable? This is happening during the recent uptick in cases. Should we be obtaining the list of people getting tested to see if they are adhering to the guideline? Should we be giving fines to these people? This type of thing is happening right in front of us and is of the utmost importance that we stop it. It is reckless and dangerous. We need to enforce the state's guidelines and fine the businesses and their employees that are breaking the mandates. I would like to say in closing, I don't believe that the council needs to intervene at this time. The businesses are doing exactly what we need for them to be doing without your guidance or lack thereof. Thank you, Nate Smith. Mark Cansteiner. Cansteiner. Dear... Oh, hi... Okay. Mayor, council, and city manager, thank you for this opportunity to comment. I am in favor of requiring face mask or cloth covering of the nose and mouth in buildings open to the public as stated in the opening sentence in council emergency regulating regulation number two. I am not in favor of the last sentence of the emergency regulation two. Facial coverings need not be worn when one individuals are alone or with other members of their household. Item one completely negates the regulation. Item one should be struck from the regulation, otherwise there is no point in the regulation. I disagree with regulation number three. If you close all the city campgrounds, people will be camping anywhere they can find, will be building fires, and going to the bathroom where you don't want them to. If other businesses, as mentioned in regulation number five, shall be no more than 50% maximum capacity, please allow the city campgrounds to operate at 50%. This allows for some city revenue and was successful practice in the earlier this season. Thank you for your time. Mark Cansteiner, inside city limits. Oh, telephonic testimony. Okay. This is David Paperman. Oh. No, he wants to... Oh, okay. Mr. Paperman, you are on... You are here at city council for a public testimony during the public hearing item. If you want to state your name and inside or outside city limits and provide your testimony, please.
All right, thank you. My name is Dave Paperman, and I live inside the city limits. Before I begin, I did want to give some kudos and appreciation to a bunch of different people, the local businesses who have taken actions to ameliorate the current outbreak, our healthcare providers, our police and first responders, mental health professionals, and especially the council, the clerk, deputy clerk, who have been kind of dealing with this constantly. Most of my comments are going to deal with the mask ordinance or mask requirement in this ordinance, but I do want to say that I also agree with many of the previous folks who have discussed allowing 50% occupancy in the campground as a way for us to maintain some local business in these times. To say that I'm frustrated at having to write this letter today is an understatement. I sincerely hope that you, in this time of public health emergency, recognize the concern based on verifiable science that has brought us to this point. I will not rehash the events of the recent past or how the current moment in time could have been avoided, other than to point out that if, as elected members of the population of the city of Seward, you had listened to the medical community of Seward, we might not be in this mess and economic downturn we are currently experiencing. I strongly urge you to pass the resolution under consideration tonight. I further urge you to make the following amendments to ordinance 2020-008 to accomplish the stated goal of responding to the current outbreak of COVID-19 in Seward. Number one, change regulation number two from mask or cloth covering to mask or facial covering. Changing to facial covering will allow those who are hesitant to use a cloth covering to use instead a clear plastic facial mask that covers their entire face, accomplishing the same droplet mitigation as a cloth mask, while showing respect for those who have anxiety related to wearing a cloth mask. Number two, change the wording in regulation two from individuals 12 and under to individuals four and under. It may also be helpful to include language that would allow use between the ages of four and 12 not to be required to comply with the regulation unless they are with a parent or guardian. In support of the ordinance, I offer the following reasons. Many people cite changing recommendations from the WHO and the CDC regarding universal masking when refusing to wear masks. In February and March, there was a dire lack of personal protective equipment for the healthcare industry. In order to ensure that these frontline workers had the PPE they needed, members of the public were told not to purchase or wear masks. This was not for scientific or disease reasons, but only due to the shortage of products for frontline workers. As soon as the production of masks was ramped up and volunteer-made cloth masks became available, all of the international, national, statewide, and local healthcare recommendations have been to provide for people to wear masks at all times in public, especially when social distancing is not possible. Masks do not protect the wearer, and they are designed to protect others in the community. If the person wearing the mask is either infected and yet to show symptoms or is asymptomatically infected, everyone should wear a mask, not for their own protection, but for the protection of their friends, neighbors, and community. Masks do not filter out the virus. Viruses are very small, and no mask will prevent their transmission alone. However, viruses do not travel independently. They ride on saliva droplets that are much larger than what can pass through a homemade cloth mask. Wearing a cloth mask stops viruses not because the viruses cannot fit through, but because the water droplets the virus rides on cannot pass through the mask. Some people have medical conditions that prevent them from wearing masks. This is true. However, if people have breathing problems, they are at high risk for bad consequences if infected, so they should not be out in public at all during this pandemic. They should be using home delivery services or local groups like the Senior Center and Neighbor to Neighbor to shop and access resources like the post office. Other people have anxiety or mental health reasons for not wearing a cloth mask. If this is the case, they should purchase a clear face shield that works almost as well as a cloth mask without the over-the-mouth-and-nose constriction that gives some people anxiety. We are on the cusp of a major turning point. If you do not pass this ordinance, our community will continue to be nearly overrun with visitors escaping Anchorage to Recreate while bringing their infections to Seward. We have all seen what a small group of infections can do to our community, with nearly all restaurants closed and our entire economy taking yet another serious blow. If you pass this ordinance, there will also be effects. Campground revenue will decrease, and some businesses will experience short-term pain. Some residents will experience mild to moderate discomfort from wearing a mask. Some people with boats or homes in Seward will not come down to enjoy our community, even though they may...
Thank you, sir. That was your five minutes. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good day. Next is Suzie Towesley. Dear Seward City Council, this community is in need of your leadership. Last week, as we watched local business owners step up and make the hard decisions to voluntarily close for the safety of their staff and customers, it is the duty of the city council to make decisions that protect the citizenry of Seward. Given the current emergency situation and the outbreak of COVID-19 in Seward, council has no choice but to close down the city campgrounds, with the exception of local people who are staying there because of housing shortage, at least for a week and for the foreseeable future. I am sure that the campground city employees are competent enough to identify the locals who are camping there and exempt them from the vacate order. This is a matter of public safety and health and should not be taken lightly. It's time for council to join our businesses in doing what's right for the people of Seward and close the campgrounds. It also stands to reason that council can and should require all city employees to wear masks or facial coverings while at work. Thank you, Suzie Towesley. Good afternoon, Brenda... Oh, here is... Okay, so I'm sorry. This is from Claire at the American Legion.
Yeah, so if you want to start, she just has these questions in relation to ordinance and the...
Okay, I'll start right there. Council emergency regulation number five: All eating and drinking establishments, including restaurant bars, ice cream, specialty food shops, all retail stores, tours, and charters, including sightseeing and ecotourism, and all places of worship shall limit indoor seating capacity to 10 or no more than 50% of the maximum capacity, whichever is greater. Question: Will this indoor requirement for no more than 50% also require social distancing and mask? The reason I am asking is places... Sorry. The reason I am asking is places may not be able to reach the 50% cutoff if practicing social distancing. I think this is an important decision, distinction, and may be worthy of... Sorry about that. Stating in the regulation, "As it may cause confusion regarding the amount of people who may safely come to a business." And then she again repeats the title. Question: This ordinance is a bit different to the regulation with respect to the amount of living people to congregate, 10 versus 20, and the same question remains from above: Will social distancing and masking be required in those businesses that can operate at 50%? If so, it may be needed to state that masking, social distancing need to be maintained, as some may not utilize the social distancing and rely on the 50% marker as a standard for people in the establishment. Thank you, Claire. Sorry.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was... I'd like to make a... Why don't you take a small break?
Okay. Is five minutes enough? It's 7:10, and we'll return at 7:15?
Let's dump break.
Okay, thank you. Here's my gavel. Five-minute break. Okay, we are ready. It's back on the record.
So we already did her, so we're fine, right?
True. We are back on the record, 7:15. Hopefully everyone refilled their popcorn bowls and got their drink and had a little comfort break. Thanks for getting back with the most interesting reality TV in town. Thanks for getting back with the most interesting reality TV in town. Let's see what this person's name is. Um, oh, this is a letter from-
Dana Paperman.
Dana Paperman.
Stand there.
Okay. Start right here. Oh, okay, so this is Dana Paperman. I don't see. Oh, okay, okay, got it. Sorry, sorry. All Alaskans are watching Seward tonight, wondering how city council is going to react to the rapid spread of the COVID-19 virus. It is time to show professional leadership that speaks volumes of how our city council views tax-paying residents, summer workers, businesses, and those who of and those of us who have had to make difficult decisions, sacrifice, and changes mid-step. Don't think you are the only one carrying this burden, but understand that your decisions tonight will set best practices for Alaskan communities to follow. I don't know if you have ever lost a friend, family member, or witnessed someone who has lost their life prematurely. It is painful. You don't get over it. Excuse me. And when it is unexpected, it creates a-
I don't know if you've ever lost a friend, family member, or witnessed someone who lost their life prematurely. It is painful. You don't get over it. And when it is unexpected, it creates a deeper wound that festers often. Don't let Seward continue to fester. National statistics show that the spread of the virus hospitalizes our senior community more than any other demographic, and this is something we need to talk about, since 20% of our population is over 60 years of old of age. COVID-19 virus has shown it can and will end the life of a senior prematurely and with no guarantee of who will become the next victim of this terrible pandemic. Your actions today could save an innocent life in Seward. Vote for a healthier summer for the residents of Seward to enjoy and not to worry about their activities of daily life, like going to the grocery store, post office, or even taking a stroll on the waterfront bike path. Residents of Seward want to enjoy their community this summer, but currently it is only open to visitors, campers, and fishermen, as reflective of council actions last week. Tonight is about us. Thank you for your consideration to keep us safe in Seward as you make difficult decisions tonight, and we want to celebrate and not mourn tomorrow. Zero loss in Seward. In good health, Dana Paperman.
Next is Carol Ann Lindsay. Regarding this, okay, regarding this special meeting notice, emergency ordinance 2020-008, I urge the city council to adhere to the ongoing recommendations of Governor Dunleavy as our city is currently involved in following. Face covering, social distancing, and cleanliness guidelines are simple, common sense guidelines in this pandemic situation. However, I do not support any closing of city-owned campgrounds. I don't believe that the campers at these sites pose a threat to the citizens of Seward. Obviously, they will not be frequenting shops, frequenting shops, businesses in our community areas because of the closures. They also travel prepared with necessary supplies for their camping adventures. The city-owned campsites are of ample size and far enough apart to maintain social distancing. Most of all, these visitors are from areas where the masks are encouraged and even mandated. For many, this time may represent the only vacation they will be able to have this summer. To have that opportunity canceled arbitrarily while they have already made their plans is unfair and does not appear to be necessary to protect the city. Thank you for the opportunity to express my views. Please read aloud my response. Carol Ann Lindsay. Okay. Christine Warner. I am Christine Warner, Seward resident. Please read my comments aloud. Thank you. I am opposed to closing down the city of Seward campgrounds. The current spacing, every other spot, is adequate. It is a major holiday, and Seward has always welcomed our out-of-town neighbors to enjoy our enjoy our beautiful natural beach. Please leave the option of wearing a mask in establishment capacity limitation up to the establishment's owners. Otherwise, it is infringing on private individuals, excuse me, and private business owners' choices and rights. Christine Warner, inside city limits. Blaine Sears, outside city limits. My comments are in regards to emergency ordinance 2020-08. I implore the city ma-, oh, sorry, the city mayor and city council to not further restrict businesses or civil liberties. In regards to the mask mandate that is now being tried for at least the third time, it was previously said that any N95 mask is acceptable as well as handkerchiefs or bandanas. Even the CDC states that normal cloths such as bandanas do not stop the virus. The weave is too porous and the virus too small. Second, N95 masks that have a valve in the front only filters air in, does not filter when you breathe out. So if your mask mandates includes handkerchief, bandanas, or masks with valves on the front, then your regulations are not based on facts but merely feelings. The closing of the campgrounds makes no logical sense. No virus lives in the sun. So by closing the campground, you are forcing more people indoors to friends' houses or hotel rooms instead of letting them get the UV rays, vitamin D, and fresh air that we all need to stay healthy. I will lump all the other portions of this mandate into one comment to save time. The number of positive test results will go up in Seward and elsewhere because more testing is being done and because current testing programs from the state say that one person testing positive three times goes down as three counts. If we, sorry, um, if we sent everyone to Seward to get testing for anything, the flu, TB, or even cancer, then you would then you would not expect any and all of these numbers to go up. More testing equalling more positives should not be the concern. Hospitalizations and deaths should be the concern. How many hospitalizations directly due to COVID do we have in Seward? How many deaths? How many of the positive-tested people in Seward have very minimal symptoms in a normal year would have called what they have allergies or a cold? Please consider all these things before you further restrict both the economy and our constitutional rights. Respectfully submitted, Blaine Sears. Next is Gere Etheridge. As a resident of Seward, a business owner, and a person infected with COVID during this current outbreak, I strongly request that you please consider closing down the campgrounds during this holiday week. With campgrounds booked to capacity, it puts the city, along with all residents, at an imminent and unnecessary risk of infection. So much of our tourism has voluntary closed for the safety of our town that is a slap in the face to their sacrifice for campgrounds to be complicit in the spread of COVID-19. The city wishes to contain the rampant virus spread in our town and all of Alaska. They will see this as an unavoidable choice to make. You cannot encourage social distancing by offering condensed lodging capacities to travelers. Essential needs for these visitors, such as food and hygiene, will put an undue burden on our community. I stand with all the businesses who have sacrificed for our personal livelihood. We do not have the luxury of prioritizing tourism while furthering the timeline of the town's outbreak. I implore you to make the right decision for our residents. Thank you, Gere Etheridge. Robert and Betty Hunt, residents of Seward, Alaska. Dear City Council, we support emergency ordinance 2020-008 with two amendments to Regulation Number Two. Remove the word "cloth" and replace with "facial," so it reads "mask or facial covering." Change the exemption age from 12 years old to four years old. This is a small thing to do to save lives. Alice, oh, I'm sorry, I missed. It's Alice Chen, Robert Hunt, and Betty Hunt, inside city limits. Virginia Allen. Dear Mayor, Attorney, and Council members, first of all, I would like to thank and applaud the leadership from local businesses that voluntarily closed once the public health threat was revealed. We all, we all got a stunning example of what real sacrifice for the good of the community looks like. I would also like to thank the individual who took the risk and alerted his friends, coworkers, and family on Facebook. If it had not happened, we would have potentially many more days of weeks of inadvertent community spread from presymptomatic and asymptomatic carriers not knowing they were positive. In speaking to the proposed ordinance as written, I would like to suggest that we keep the city campgrounds open at 250% capacity. People will still come down here to camp and will do so with no facilities. I've seen it. There are always illegal campers in my neighborhood in the summer and especially on the fourth. It would be better to have campers distance in sanctioned camping areas with facilities that are that then all over any wooded area they can find to park. I also strongly support facial coverings in public buildings. Recognizing that this has been a flashpoint issue for some people, I think we are beyond masks as statements. This is a simple, proven tool in the toolbox of slowing or stopping the spread of the virus in our community, along with hand washing and distancing. Out of respect for everyone in the community, people should automatically want to wear masks in public buildings, but in the absence of self-adjusting masks, self-adjusting comma, mask-wearing in public buildings should be required. Wearing masks is analogous to smoking. When people are in their homes or outside, they can do whatever they want. When they are in public building with other people, they need to follow guidelines that protect others. Thank you for calling this meeting and addressing this public health crisis in our community. Also, thanks to the chamber for recognizing the need to cancel the fourth festivities. Respectfully committed, Virginia, sorry, Virginia-
Randazzo.
Randazzo. Thank you, Virginia. Okay, next is Stacy Warner. Dear, oh, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, please read aloud pertaining to this ordinance. I appreciate the state and of Alaska and city of Seward's quick responsible response to notifying Seward residents regarding the recent positive case and the proactive steps of high-risk local businesses. I strongly disagree with the closure of city-owned campgrounds, prohibiting gatherings of more than 20 persons, and requiring facial coverings inside city public buildings, excuse me. With the increasing number of testing, it's highly likely that the number of positive cases will increase, but that is the number of hospitalizations and death, oh, excuse me, let me start that over. It is highly likely that the number of positive cases will increase, but is the number of hospitalizations and deaths dramatically increasing Seward or Alaska? The official numbers have shown little change with hospitalizations or deaths. Closing a campground where physically distancing can be maintained and clean, fresh air seems extreme and unmeasured based on the current state metrics. When the coronavirus, COVID-19, was considered a pandemic and our nation followed the guidelines and mandates and alerts to flatten the curve and to make sure that our public health system was not overwhelmed, it dramatically affected all of us. As of today, there have been 14 tragic deaths either caused with or from the coronavirus in Alaska with an accumulated hospital total of 68 Alaskans. Our elected public servants and politicians officials said that decisions would be based on science and data. Based upon, based upon specific metrics, our state government and health officials have been following a handful of remaining mandates and alerts, and the number of deaths from the coronavirus has remained flattened, and our healthcare system remains not overwhelmed. Living life in Seward, Alaska, or anywhere else comes from risk. Every day, people die from corona, excuse me, cardiovascular diseases, cancers, respiratory diseases, lower respiratory infections, dementia, digestive diseases, suicide accidents, and the list goes painfully on, and we are all tragically affected directly and indirectly. The number of people who have died in Alaska alone from the above mentioned is well over 14 Alaskans over the same time period, and every death is tragic. I urge the council to follow the science and the data, follow the governor's reopen Alaska Responsibility Plan and the state health guidelines and the recommended CDC guidelines. Please vote against this proposed emergency ordinance. Thank you. Sincerely, Stacy Warner. Kyle Walker. Dear City Council, Seward City Council, my name is Kyle Walker and I live inside city limits. I support the emergency ordinance before you tonight. Our time has come to recognize COVID-19 was never going to be a leave Alaska alone. Temporary public health measures are neither unreasonable or illegal, as was suggested by speakers at your previous meeting. I support two minor modifications to the ordinance. Under Section Two, remove the word "cloth" in the phrase "all individuals in Seward must wear a cloth or mask covering over their nose and mouth." This qualification is unnecessary. Under the same section, lower the age exemption from 12 to something closer to the CDC's recommendation, which is two years old. I have seen four suggested as an adequate compromise. Please do the right thing for Seward and adopt these temporary measures now. Thank you, Kyle Walker. This is from Craig Ambrosiani and Robert Rang, so Craig Ambrosiani, Executive Director, Seward Health Community Health Center, Robert Rang Administrator, Providence Seward Medical Center, and then also Brent Ursel, Glacier Family Medicine. Dear City Council and Administration, in response to the recent outbreak of COVID-19 in our community, the Seward area medical providers met June 29th with city administration and the mayor and unanimously recommended enacting the city's Code Orange Plan. The reason for this recommendation are known exposure events that have taken place in our community and out-of-area events attended by community members where there was an active COVID-19 exposure. Our recommendation is always backed up by a significant increase in positive cases in Seward of nearly 30 individuals in seven days. Additionally, due to the huge influx of tests from around the state, the turnaround time for test positive, test processing has increased from 24 to 48 hours to 48 to 72-plus hours. As you may be aware, this virus spreads without systems, symptoms, and is hard to detect in its early stages of infection. Also, the testing has been taking around two days to get results. Due to these delay factors, you don't find out until it's too late, until it's, you don't find out it's too late until it is too late. It is important to make decisions based on what is expected and not necessarily where the number of cases are today. We appreciate that the city appears to be moving forward with mandatory masking in outdoor public places. This is indoor public places. This is our highest priority. The closing of the campgrounds is another good step in the right direction. Allowing businesses to stay open on a limited capacity of 50% or 10 people, whichever is higher, could potentially defeat all the efforts of our medical community and enhance the spread of the virus that is already within our community. We would prefer that everything shuts down for at least seven days so that we can continue to test and evaluate the extent of the virus and work towards a more calculated reopening of our community. This is from Wendy Milligan. Dear City Council, though I am a resident of Moose Pass, my family works, plays, pays for goods and services, and worships here in Seward. Here we are yet again imploring you not to tear down what you instead supposed to be protecting. And no, I don't believe it's your job to protect our health choices. It's your job to protect our civil liberties, to protect our economy, to protect the independent way of life that Alaska used to be known for. You are being, at best, disingenuous in this attempt. You failed to mandate masks, so now you want to tighten the belt even further so that masks become the point of accepted compromise. At worst, you're being downright unethical to manipulate the wishes of the people. I've heard the claim that those of us with the opinion are ignorant, hyperbolic, and vocal minority, yet even with these letters from healthcare professionals, note they are not epidemiologists, immunologists, or research scientists, that it is still not the majority of our population, nor are we ignorant, rather we have worked even harder to review the information available in order to defend our stance of our freedoms. And how ironic that this will be the order of business just before we celebrate Independence Day. This new mandate plan could be argued on many levels. One is the contradictory evidence about how dangerous COVID-19 is to begin with, how reliable testing numbers are, and whether any level of perceived danger should strip away the Bill of Rights of the Constitution of these United States, freedoms to assemble and practice religion freely. The CDC's newest estimate statistic on the fatality rate of coronavirus is, drumroll please, 0.26%. Even if that number is on, as some claim, a low-ball estimate, it is still not the doom and gloom number that should strip away livelihoods of our business owners. Huge outbreak, hotspot, spike, are all words that are being tossed around in regard to Seward. Ironically, all that is necessary from the term outbreak, it used to be to be used as two cases, and yet how many people are even symptomatic? When people need to be tested just to determine if they have the virus, how bad can it be? Estimates of those who have the virus but are asymptomatic range from 20% all the way up to a study showing asymptomatic prevalence of 81%. While those who are in a more vulnerable condition obviously need to protect themselves, that does not justify ruining the lives of the majority, throwing in the unreliable testing data and testing types, and we are very uncertain shaky ground on which to make sweeping policy changes. With fear of beating a dead horse, the science supporting the efficiency or lack thereof regarding face masks is not settled. You can view multiple studies, even if you still care to be informed broadly at this point, at places listed below. Again, there is no consensus, there should be no policy. If you read nothing else to inform your decision, the Constitution aside, please read the article, "How a Free Society Deals with Pandemics According to Legendary," sorry, epidemiologist and smallpox eradicator Donald Henderson and the American Institute for Economic Research. Where do we turn for competent commentary on the medical aspects of quarantine lockdowns? Where are credentialed and experienced experts who can provide weighty evidence that this is wrong, this is the wrong course? Let me introduce you to Donald A. Henderson. His riving summary: "Experience has shown that communities faced with epidemics and other adverse events respond best with the least anxiety when the normal social functioning in the community is least disrupted. Strong political and public health leadership to provide reassurance and to ensure that the needed medical care services are provided are critical elements. If either is seen to be less than optimal, a manageable epidemic could move towards Finally, I refer you to the Bill of Rights, Amendment Number One. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition our government for the redress of grievances. Our churches have the freedom to assemble with as many people as they desire. You have, under the Constitution of the United States, no power to prohibit the free exercise of religion." So what do we do from here? We live our lives with clean hands, protect ourselves as we so choose, we wear a mask if we want protection, we don't wear a facial mask if we feel that is worse, we go out to eat if we are not concerned, we stay home if we are. We're worried about catching a virus at church, we stay at home. If that practice of religion is more weighty than our concerns, we go to church. These decisions are not yours to make. Thank you for your time, Wendy Milligan. And she has the citations for what she referenced in her letter. Justine Pashuzell. Dear City Clerk, please read my comments aloud. I support the emergency ordinance with the two amendments to Regulation Number Two. Remove the word "cloth" and replace with "facial," so it reads "mask or facial covering." Change the exemption age from 12 years old to four years old. CDC recommends two years old. Let's be proactive and sensible about public health. Thank you, Justine Pashuzell. Okay, there's another phone call.
No, can I just, I need to just point out that the remaining here are were received after, actually after the time, so I just want to make sure that. There's only two left, so.
Well, so council, it's pointed out that these are a few minutes after 2 o'clock. I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and make sure that public comments are received. I, you know, I feel like they weren't egregiously after 2 o'clock, and I feel like, you know, email is what it is. Are there any objections? Are there any objections to the last two comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I think I can just do.
Um, 9. No, do 9.
Oh, sorry. 596.
No, the whole number because it's not a state.
Please dial the authorization code.
Hello, you've reached generations.
So the status was to call once, so we'll just keep going. And then the final one of the comments is Margaret Anderson. Please read these comments into the record. Mayor and City Council Members, this ordinance appears to be a compromise with temporary restrictions. My hope is restrictions will be lifted shortly after the 6th of July. Sesoting has increased dramatically, resulting in many positive cases. I question as to the seriousness of those positive readings. Businesses have voluntarily shut down their operations. They have required their employees all to be tested and implemented deep cleaning. Give the businesses a break. Continue to recommend masks and distancing. Don't make it so restrictive people can't operate. Regarding the city campground restrictions, I am concerned that this will drive campers to questionable areas and into neighborhoods. Thank you all for your hard work in these difficult times. You aren't going to please everyone, but a reasonable compromise approach will be more acceptable. Thank you for your consideration, Margaret Anderson. Is that all?
And that concludes public hearing testimony.
So that concludes the public testimony. We are back with the ordinance. And I just want to start off by telling the public, you know, I've heard that the last time we had a mask ordinance before us, the public felt it was painful to watch, there were a lot of amendments, but I just want to remind the public, like, we are doing our best to amend this, you know, to make sure we're getting the best documents. So it's a bit like watching the sausage be made, but I think it's to your benefit that you hear our discussions at the dais and understand our reasoning, and we'll try to get down to the best ordinance for the situation. So if it's okay with council, what I want to do is I want to go start with each section individually, and if someone has a motion or a point to be made about that section, I'm going to go through the names to give folks the opportunity to do that. Unless, I'll entertain right now if there's a different way folks would like it to be handled. Councilmember Baklaun.
There's just one question I have, and this is relating to the ordinance as a whole, because the advice from our attorney was that there had to be an enforcement piece to any mandates that came on, and there was no enforcement on here. Yes, and that was made clear at the last special meeting when we were at the library, when there was no enforcement on any mandates with Councilmember Kreitz and Osenga, which is why they included the $25 fee or fine for people who are not compliant with the mask ordinance. So I want to ask the attorney.
Can we just go ahead and do that? Holly, can you answer that question? Did it have to do with the suggestion as opposed to a mandate? Did you hear the question, Attorney Wells?
Yes, I did. So in general, what we're learning when we look at the cases coming out on COVID, social distancing restrictions, and mask ordinances, is that they want to see a fine provision in order to justify enforcement or citation, right? So we want to present a complete ordinance. Here, because we're covering several different things, and because the Seward City Code has a provision that says any violation of an emergency rule is a violation of the code, what would happen is, and I know council is not eager to adopt a fine provision, so what would happen then is if a police officer issued a citation for a violation of this ordinance, that citation would have a court appearance, so it would automatically have a court appearance. It wouldn't have a fine from our fine schedule associated with it. So that is how this ordinance is put forward without a specific fine amount. But the process for issuing a ticket would be a little more complex than some other violations of city law.
Councilmember Baklaun.
I just want to clarify for the record that the attorney said any violation of this would require a ticket that would then make the person have to show up to court for appearance for a violation of this mandate. So thank you for that answer, I appreciate it, Holly.
So just to clarify, is that what you're saying, Councilor, Attorney Wells? Like, there's other degrees of enforcement, such as verbal warnings, that you wouldn't necessarily mandate a court appearance each time, is that correct?
Exactly. So what would happen is, let's just use an example, if someone, they, you know, they are in the campground and they refuse to leave the campground, and the police say, you know what, we're going to provide you education as to why we passed this ordinance and how important this is, that'd probably be your first line of defense. That's fine. The next line of defense might be a, okay, well, you're not leaving, we need you to leave, we're issuing you a ticket, and the ticket would have the general penalty provision associated with it, or a lesser amount, maybe the officer would say $50. But that wouldn't act like a ticket when you park in the wrong spot. Instead, what it would have, and in order for that to be enforced, that individual getting the citation would have a court appearance, and the police officer would have to show up and defend the ticket and the fine amount. Now ideally, if this was something other than a temporary ordinance, we would want to put into the fine schedule or the ordinance itself a specific amount for a violation. But here, I think the importance is we're making this conduct mandatory and we're preserving the discretion of the police officers to enforce it. I know your city manager for all enforcement regarding COVID-19 issues has leaned towards education, and that's been the encouragement on the state side as well. They've really encouraged education and counseling, in essence, regarding the importance of following the mandate.
Okay. So I'm going to go through the list and see if folks have general questions on the entirety of the ordinance since we started down that road. Councilmember Osenga, did you have any questions or comments on the entirety of the ordinance?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Kreitz, and just because folks say no, I mean, you can call my attention back to you if you, I mean, it's not your only chance, but I'll just go through and make sure folks have the opportunity. Councilmember Kreitz?
I don't have any questions at this point. I did have some suggestions for amendments to.
Would you be fine if we wait, and did that section by section, if we're just talking about if there's anything general right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor McClure?
Well, my only question that just came to mind from what we were just talking about, nowhere on this ordinance says mandate, and that was part of the intent. It says we must wear a mask, it doesn't say it is mandated, so I'm wondering what the enforcement would be if it does not, I don't want it to say mandate, but it was my understanding that this is, well, I don't know, I'd like to ask the attorney.
Attorney Wells, did you hear that question?
Yes, I did. So when city council adopts an ordinance and when we use language that's not permitted, such as language like must or shall, that becomes a law. It's a legal law until it's repealed or it expires. And that means that we're not, I mean, I know the state used public health mandates and it used public health advisements, but really we look to the language regarding the specific direction. So here, this is specific direction, and it is requiring action on behalf of members of the public as well as businesses. So I don't think, it isn't a mandate in the sense that we are adopting it as a regulation. We have not attached a fine amount to it, and the city manager, again, they are taking a counseling and guidance education-based approach to enforcement, but it is a law. It is an emergency law.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Butz?
No, nothing overall right now.
Okay. Councilmember Cease?
Yeah, I'm saying that I, I don't know, maybe this is just one, I typed, it's just the one of them.
Okay, so we'll.
Everything's okay except on one that I don't agree with.
Okay.
Do I want to say that now?
No, 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 we'll just talk about, just generally, and now if we're ready, we'll start going through the sections. I'll start with, if that's amenable to everyone, speak up now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Section 1 is emergency declarations. I believe declaration, I believe that this is pretty standard language. Does anyone have any amendments to make to Section 1? Section 2, that's the City Council Emergency Regulation Number 2, and I'll start with Cease. Did you have any comments or amendments to make to this section?
No, I don't.
Okay. Councilmember Butz?
Um, I may have one amendment, and I just, I want to make sure here maybe with the attorney, was that in the first sentence, except for otherwise provided in regulation, all individuals in Seward, do we have to say within the city limits, or just Seward is good enough in general there?
We only have jurisdiction in the city limits.
I think you can just say there.
Okay.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Butz, was that the only question or comment at this time for that section?
Yes, that was the only one that I had.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kreitz, did you have comments or amendments under Section 2?
Uh, yes, under Section 2, the paragraph that says Council Emergency Regulation Number 2, I would like to make an amendment for the individuals 12 and under, be changed to individuals with under per the CDC recommendation.
So I just heard, you know, it was a bleep right there, so you're saying individuals strike 12 and insert what?
Age 2, which is the CDC recommendation.
So you wanted to say individuals strike 12, so then it'll read individuals age 2, which is a CDC recommendation and under?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Did you want to speak to your amendment?
Um, yes, as far as making that amendment, if, you know, you're looking at adolescents and preteens when you're putting 12 and under, it's pretty naive to think that they're going to social distance at that age. You're putting, these children are 2, we have, even in our community, children with asthma, chronic diseases that are vulnerable. We need to make sure that we go by the CDC recommendation if we're going to put this emergency resolution in, and go by 2 and under. Anyone age 2 and over can remove a mask on their own.
Okay, so speaking to that amendment only, I'm going to go through the list, speaking to that amendment only. Councilmember Cease?
Yeah.
No, 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 I'm not voting. Do you have any comments specific to that amendment?
No comments. Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, I'm sorry.
Um, no, I would like to see it younger, and 2 is fine for me, or 4.
Okay. Councilmember Butz, did you have any comments specific to the amendment?
No.
Councilmember Osenga, do you have any comments specific to the amendment?
No.
Councilmember Baklaun, do you have any comments specific to the amendment? Sorry, I have to say that over and over.
No, I do have one comment. I know that, I think it's pretty naive to think that any child would wear a mask all the time. I do like something around 4. I don't know if that's a compromise, or, I understand the CDC guidelines, I just think a little more compromise on the age of the child would be a little bit better, just to curtail any bad looks in different places where their kids are just not keeping a mask on. But I will not vote for that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McClure?
Yeah, I was going to say exactly what Councilmember Baklaun said. I was, I won't vote for this, but I will propose an amendment for 4, for age 4, when it comes to my turn, I think. It's just more realistic and close to the goal.
My turn to make comments. I also would rather see the age before. I understand that that's CDC recommendations, but I feel like parents have more control of children under 4 and can manage their social circle, and I am fine with changing it to younger, but I would like to see the age 4, as was previously mentioned by quite a few letters. Are there any further comments, or can we have the clerk take a vote on the amendment?
Um, yes, this is Councilmember Kreitz. I am willing to change that wording to 4. Of course, I do, you know, want to put that out there that I wanted to initially, put the age at 2 because that is the CDC recommendation, and from the advice of all of our local healthcare providers and state providers, that we follow those, but I am willing to compromise at age 4.
You know, so we don't get into, let's not do, let's try as hard as to not do secondary amendments. I, thank you for talking about a compromise, let's vote on this, it might pass it too, and then it will, it sounds like there's other people willing to make an amendment to look at 4, if that's all right with you.
That is.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Voting on the amendment to change the age from 12 to 2, Butz?
No.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Cease?
No.
Osenga?
Yes.
McClure?
No.
Baklaun?
No.
Mayor Terry?
No.
That amendment has failed.
So I'll turn to Vice Mayor McClure. Did you have something you wanted to?
Oh, on Section 2, yeah, actually, well, we'll take one amendment at a time, then. I would like to change the wording in the middle of the regulation to, from individuals 12 and under to individuals 4 and under.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
So we have a first and a second. Is there a need to discuss, or should I go through the list? If someone wants to speak up and have more discussion, do so now. Thank you, Madam Clerk, would you take a vote?
Voting on the amendment to change the age from 12 to 4, Kreitz?
Yes.
Baklaun?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Butz?
Yes.
Cease?
Yeah.
Osenga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
So, thank you, Vice Mayor, but I'm going to go back to Councilmember Kreitz first and get back to you, but Councilmember Kreitz, did you have additional amendments in this section that you wanted to bring up?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. So next is Councilmember Osenga, did you have anything in Section 2 specifically that you'd like to bring up?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Councilmember Baklaun, did you have something within Section 2 you would like to bring up? I can come back to you if you prefer.
Yeah, please, I'm just reading one more thing.
Yep, so I'll go to Vice Mayor McClure.
Okay, I do. I would like it to read or make a change in the first sentence. Except as otherwise provided in this regulation, all individuals in Seward must wear a mask or strike cloth and put facial covering.
Facial covering, I'll second that. And throughout the ordinance, may I ask?
Yeah, I guess, I haven't had it.
Yeah, I think if, my second would be concurrent with that.
Yes.
Mayor?
So I'm going to let the Vice Mayor speak to it first, and then I'll go down through the comments since she made the motion. Vice Mayor McClure?
Oh, this is just in.
Oh, is that?
This is Holly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Holly, I'm sorry.
And this is, you know, it's, when we, I would recommend we change it just to covering, and only because it's limited to coverings like cover your nose and mouth, and so the use of the term facial covering, which we use later to be inconclusive, is, you know, what, facial covering, covering your nose and mouth suggests that the facial covering has a definition, when I think the point is to just allow it to be made of other materials so long as it covers your nose and mouth. So the, previously, the CDC uses the term facial covering, and the term mask is designed to allow for other types of masks. mask is designed to allow for other types of masks that would not be made out of cloth. So, it may be, I, I don't have a problem with amending it to take out the term facial, or to take out the word cloth, but do you see the dilemma there?
Yes.
So, I'll go back to Vice Mayor McClure.
Could I withdraw that amendment and make a separate amendment? Would that be all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I would like it to read then is, "Except as otherwise provided in this regulation, all individuals in sewered must wear a mask or covering over their nose and mouth."
So, I'll second, and just...
Striking cloth.
Striking cloth, and that's specific to throughout the ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go through the list, um, and, uh, get comments. So, I'll start with, um, Butts, did you have comments on that amendment?
No, ma'am, ma'am.
Councilmember Kreitz, did you have comments on that amendment?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Osanga?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Baklaun?
No.
No comments? Um, councilmember Sees?
Okay, now, she wants to take out the facial covering, down on the last sentence, it says facial covering need to be, not need be worn, when, so, if we're taking, don't want that to be facial, on the other ones were cloth, but do we take out facial there? Just covering not need be worn?
Um, I guess my feel is that it's not, um, not in that specific word order, that it would be fine just leaving that, since it's not mask or covering, that it just reads facial covering, but, um, Attorney Wells, did you have any comments on that catch?
Yes, I don't think it needs to be removed, because the, because it's a lot of limitation, I think, but it, I think generally maybe it could range to cover, mouth and other coverage.
Right.
Great, thank you. Um, councilmember Cler, you've already had comments, and I have no further comments. Um, madam clerk, would you take a vote, please, on that amendment?
Voting on the amendment to, to strike the word cloth, Kreitz?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Baklaun?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Sees?
Yeah.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
Um, and I just wanted to be really clear and put on the record, because someone asked me, um, this pertains to both public and employees, so this isn't just employees coming in, this does pertain to, I'm sorry, this isn't just the public coming in, this regulation, um, does pertain to, um, employees in these public spaces, or public buildings also. Um, so, I'm just going to do a final check on section two, oh, go back to councilmember Baklaun.
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a motion to add, in the first sentence, um, at, "over their nose and mouth, within rooms, in buildings, open to the public, when they cannot maintain six feet of space between themselves and individuals." So, uh, yes, so adding within rooms, in buildings, open to the public.
Wait, is there a second? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I did that wrong.
Just wait, he's, we'll let him collect his thoughts for a second.
Within rooms, yes.
Can you read your, can you say your motion one more time, please?
I would like to add, in the first sentence, um, after we struck cloth there, so covering over their nose and mouth, within rooms, in buildings, open to the public.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, councilmember Baklaun?
So, I feel that some people may have segregated offices, or there may be, maybe the bakery at Safeway or something, and, or they, maybe they do wear a mask, but, um, in other rooms where the public is not allowed, rather than saying the building as a whole, and saying, let's use Safeway as an example, um, maybe there's someone who works on an office in the back, and they do not need to wear a mask, because they're not in a room that is not open to the public.
Yes, okay. Is there, so I'm going to go through the, go through the list for discussion. Um, uh, councilmember Sees, you were the second to that motion, do you have comments?
Well, if they're not six feet away from somebody, although I think anybody should wear it, if they're within people, not just, um, if it's not open to the public.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think that everybody should wear one, if they're with somebody else that's not family, or, uh, whatever it says on the next line, under one and two.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers...
Yeah, this is Holly Wells, I just want to, um, I want to state that councilmember Sees, I think that's a very good point. I think that this is not, if someone is in a private office, or if they are in a room outside of the public, or anyone outside their household, um, I mean, if, if they're in a room with their, someone from their household, that's not going to apply, so that, or in a room that they can maintain six feet of distance, it's not going to apply, so that should cover the office component.
Thank you. Councilmember Butts, did you have comments?
I just, I just feel the same way about, yeah, I think that the six-foot thing there too works the same as the intention, I think, that, that councilmember Baklaun is trying to do. I think the six-foot, uh, portion of that one does, does cover that.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz, do you have comments?
Um, I agree, I believe that the six-foot, um, space distance covers what, uh, councilmember Baklaun is trying to achieve.
Thank you. Councilmember Osanga, do you have comments?
Uh, I agree in the same way, the six-foot covers it.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor McClure?
No comments.
I have no comments either. Um, councilmember Baklaun, did you have further comments? Um, madam clerk, would you call for a vote, please?
Voting on the amendment to add the words "within rooms" before "in buildings, open to the public." McClure?
No.
Butts?
No.
Kreitz?
None.
Sees?
No.
Osanga?
No.
Baklaun?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
No.
That amendment has failed.
Okay, I'm going to call out again, are there any other amendments or comments about section two in this, um, ordinance? Great, so I'm going to look, going to go to section three. I know I do have, um, uh, I do have a motion to make, but I'm going to hold off and see if, based on the comments, there's other motions that folks would like to make, and I'm going to start, I'll just call out, um, if that's fine. Councilmember Butts, did you have any amendments or comments regarding section three?
I, I do have a, a motion that I did want to change from the city-owned campgrounds, all city-owned campgrounds, and I'm trying to remember, I'm just trying to think about how we're going to put this in here, all, the very first sentence, all city-owned campgrounds, and then strike, shall be closed, um, and then we don't want to put in there, we don't want to put in there the thing, the thing on the, fifty percent capacity.
Okay, let me say this, because we do not need to make a square finning a round peg, so if there's something you are trying to make amendments to this, if you need to strike it in this entirety and start off with a new sentence, that is also an option.
Yeah, so, I, I really don't, I think we can make this work here, too.
Okay.
Instead, so what was, what, what the, the motion I would like to make is, all city-owned campgrounds shall be, and then closed for, strike the words closed for, so we will say all city-owned campgrounds shall be fifty percent capacity, I guess, I guess I will keep four yet, for recreational camping purposes.
Open for, open half?
So, we're just going to pick off the word, we're going to strike the word closed, all city-owned campgrounds shall be fifty percent capacity for recreational camping purposes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So, there is a second. So, let me just clarify, the motion will read, "All city-owned campgrounds shall be at fifty percent capacity for recreational camping purposes," and that's the first sentence following that regulation number three.
Right, and then, and we're just striking the word closed.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I'm going to go, uh, councilmember Osanga, would you like to start us off with this?
Well, I'm just going to say, uh, I, I don't think, it sounds like we're trying to say that it should, it should fall at all times, I think what we're trying to say is it will not operate at more than fifty percent capacity, is what we're trying to say.
I just had a quick question for maybe administration, if the social distance, um, measures that we were taking before, where we did the every other spot, was that fifty percent of our capacity, or was that more or less than fifty percent of our capacity?
That was fifty percent.
Thank you.
Okay, so to councilmember Osanga's point, let's read that out loud, "All city-owned campgrounds shall be, um, at fifty percent capacity for recreational camping purposes." So, um, uh, councilmember Butts, did you have an amendment to your own motion?
See if I've got this right, "All city-owned campgrounds shall be not more than fifty percent capacity for recreational camping purposes."
Yeah, this is Holly Wells, I, I have some comments on that, when you're...
Um, I, now's a, now's a great time to chime in.
Okay, and this, these are more questions for administration, but when we look at reducing the capacity with, uh, for a campground, for example, we have to look at the reservation structure, I think, because I know that, I believe I know, that the city's campgrounds are generally well and fully reserved, so if we reduce the capacity, then a determination has to be made as to who has to go and who gets to stay, and if you are doing every other campground, and that's how you're setting capacity, then a determination needs to be made regarding the nature of the use of each particular campground, right, because some of those campgrounds are, uh, occupied by people who are looking at the C-Lite Center or volunteering at other, uh, local industries, so these are, I don't, I know create the sausage-making component, but I think these considerations need to be, come into play before you finalize your language, because we don't want to create a regulation that isn't enforceable, or isn't enforceable in a uniform way.
So, let's turn to administration, and I want you to hear that what we're trying to accomplish is having, ha, taking in half the capacity of our campgrounds to help with social distancing. So, as we're struggling with, um, making an amendment to that fact, how can we help you accomplish that with our amendment?
So, so I'm going to turn it over to Tyler, but first I want to point out, um, when they were mandated that they could open, when they changed, having out all of the capacity met the state requirements with distancing, so we could have opened at a hundred percent, but administration chose to open every other one, which is fifty percent of ours, but it does meet the mandate that was in place if we open all of them. So, we have a thirty-day software, and I'll let Tyler talk about, you know, how the timeframe goes and how we implement reservations, really, it's, it's a little complicated and not easy to maneuver, but, so thirty days out, we can fix that very easily, and I'll have him, he has some items to address.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
So, that is correct, so we do have a rolling thirty-day reservation window, um, and for the comments that were given earlier, a lot of our sites are fully booked, especially for the upcoming weekends, it thins out a little bit more as we get it, uh, further out within that thirty-day window, um, based on the stated objective of what you're trying to accomplish, um, yeah, I don't have any simple solution to offer, for, other than some sort of random sorting method essentially to cancel people's reservations, um, I, uh, I have a statement, I have a recommendation, if you'd, if you'd like to hear that, but that's not necessary, if you don't...
Um, so, right now, the, the motion under advisement is looking at the fifty percent capacity, would it have bearing on that motion?
Um, my general recommendation is against the, uh, regulation altogether, so, in that sense, it would have effect.
I mean, I think, uh...
But I'm happy to speak to whichever issue you want to talk about.
Okay.
This is mayor?
Yes.
Um, so, I'd like to ask the administration, if I may?
Please. Is this councilmember Butts? Sorry, coun, councilmember Butts, is this you?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, if we were then to just strike the first sentence of this one, "All city-owned campgrounds shall be closed for recreational camping purposes," would that allow the administration to manage the campgrounds at fifty percent capacity based on the state's mandate?
After the holiday weekend, maybe, right? There's some maneuvering.
Correct, um, so if we don't take additional reservations, then we are, in effect, closed?
Just one second.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so...
Respect the first sentence.
Close to new registration.
Okay.
Is that what, is that what...
So, okay, so now I think we're farther afield, so, um, let's, let's deal with the motion on the table specifically. Madam Clerk, will you read the motion on the table, please?
Currently, I have the motion to strike the word closed and replace with not more than fifty percent capacity.
Okay, so that's the motion on the table. We can back ourselves out of that and have another discussion, or we can vote on that. What's the wishers, wishes of the motion maker?
Can I withdraw my motion?
Um, so you need the second to agree, and then there needs to be no objection from the rest of council, since it's actually the body's motion. It does, uh, who seconded that?
That was Baklaun.
I, I did, Cheryl, and, um, I, I agreed to strike it.
Okay, so, are, is there any objections to, um, taking that motion off the table and, and having a discussion? Do you have an objection, councilmember Baklaun? Go ahead with your objection.
Um, if we, if we already just do this where we're at, and just go through and say, "This is what we want to do," um, then it would just be up to administration to figure out the solution to the fifty percent. Is that right?
Well, as it's stated, it'd be the hundred percent.
What's that?
As, as it's written, it'd be...
No, as the motion is, is fifty percent.
Oh, with the motion, that's actually correct.
Well, so, um, let's, let's continue to talk about the motion. So, um, if, if we leave it at the open, uh, the fifty percent capacity, and then it continues to read, "The city will not take additional reservation or campers, and will coordinate with current campers to depart at the end of their paid stay without renewal," um, and then it would still remain open for essential workers. I mean, I guess, I for one would allow the, the city grace to, you know, to sort that out as best they can as it moves into the future. Um, I'll go through, council, uh, councilmember Osanga?
Just, just a question, I, I kind of thought we were not doing the fifty percent, we're not on that motion anymore?
We still are, that, so, what happens when a motion is made and seconded, you know, technically, you can, the motioner could withdraw and, and the second, but, um, you know, once, once that happens, it...
I, I...
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, pardon me, it's, I know it's...
I got, I got it, I...
I, I'm sorry, I know it's tough, and I'm hoping that I'm being as clear as possible, so excuse me if that wasn't clear.
No, that was my fault, I was, I know what happened, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's me. Um, so, I, I, let's continue to discuss the fifty capen, uh, fifty percent possible capacity, councilmember Baklaun.
The reason why I don't want to withdraw is because I want to ask one more question.
Yes.
Is the current reservation status right now, is that more or less than fifty percent capacity for this weekend?
It is, councilmember, it's, so we've had approximately a hundred and fifty cancellations on our, out of three hundred and twenty-five for our waterfront sites, I, I, those are the stats I have for the waterfront sites, I don't have the stats for...
So, is that fifty percent, or more, or less?
Less than fifty percent.
Less than fifty percent, right now, current reservations?
At the waterfront sites, so we're getting there.
Correct.
So, um, so I'll let you enumerate your points specifically, if you would like...
My point is, right now, that there is less than fifty percent reservations on the book, on the website, reservations are closed, so we are not taking any more reservations, so as it stands right now, if we pass this motion, we are under the fifty percent.
For the waterfront campgrounds.
Thank you.
Okay. So, let's go through and discuss the motion that's on the floor, that's very helpful. Councilmember Sees, I'll let you discuss the motion on the floor, and that's it, looking at fifty percent capacity for the campground.
Well, I think fifty...
Well, I think 50% is a great idea. I hate to see them closed. But if it's less than 50% now for just this weekend, what about next weekend when they're not just going to take reservations? Have these people leave? Then we're going to be back down to 25%? I just think that we should not have that whole one and redo the whole thing. Because it's saying the city will not take additional reservations. And then the ones that are in there, they have to leave.
Yes.
So I just, I think that we have to start over on that one.
Okay. Councilmember Butts, do you have comments?
Well, I guess, we have the, what we want to accomplish in the motion. And I guess they're getting to, I'd like to ask the administration, what is the easiest way that you think that we can keep our campgrounds at 50% capacity or below? Is it to strike the whole thing and allow the city to manage it that way? Or is it to change this, what we have right here?
I think your, I think your first inclination that all city-owned campgrounds shall be limited to 50% capacity is pretty spot on. You may be able to essentially just strike the second line after that. And that may get you where you want.
So you're saying that also, so after this motion, just strike the second sentence also?
Correct.
And the third?
Well, let's hold off. Because I want to make sure that we have campground spaces for employees. Okay, so Councilmember Butts, did you have any further comments? Oh, I mean, I'm going through the list, so you can have further comments. But can I talk to other councilmembers at this time? Would that be all right?
That's fine.
Okay, Councilmember Kreitz, did you have comments pertaining to this motion?
The only comment that I had was thinking in part wording would be that if the city froze existing reservations as they stand now, and moving forward, excepted no more than 50% capacity reservation.
Okay, let's get there next, then. Councilmember Osanga, did you have further comments, sir?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Councilmember Bucklon?
No.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor McClure?
No.
My comments are, you know, I think that I'd like to take this motion up. And then if we need to tailor subsequent language in this regulation, we will do so once we vote on this motion. Are there any further comments? Or can the clerk call for a vote? And if I hear no comments, I'll just ask her for a vote. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call for a vote, please?
Voting on the amendment to strike the word "closed" and replace it with "not more than 50% capacity." Bucklon?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Kreitz?
No.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
Now, Councilmember Kreitz, you did, did you have further language that you wanted to suggest?
I was just thinking that, I mean, the way that it was worded initially, let's it kind of open towards the reservation system that the city has. And that if you could put in there that they froze existing reservations that they have currently, just because Tyler said that they did have 150 cancellations that did leave about 50% capacity. And then moving forward, existing reservations will exceed no more than 50% capacity. They could strike that the city will not take additional reservations because you can put, moving forward, the city will not take more than 50% capacity with the reservations. And the city campgrounds will remain open for essential workers and critical infrastructure. Or if you had additional wording to that, that would be fine.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion. So the city will not take additional reservations over 50% capacity is the addition. Or campers, so if they show up. And will coordinate with current campers to depart at the end of their paid stay without renewal. But I guess that doesn't quite get us there. So I don't need a second to that. I don't know. Councilmember Kreitz, did you have specific language in there? Oh, I guess I do. Oh, so let me try one more time, I'm sorry. The city will not take additional reservations over 50% capacity, that's the addition. And then just strike the rest of it.
Yes.
That gets us there. And I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So I'll just speak to that. You know, I understand that it might be difficult, and there's going to be some bumps and bruises. But I, for one, am going to have the grace to know that you're moving towards that as your goal, and we will get there. And so that would be my support in that motion. And I would just ask that the public realize that it's not as easy as turning on and off a switch and that we see progress there. So since I made the motion, I'll speak. Vice Mayor McClure, did you have comments since you seconded?
No, I don't. I agree with what you said.
Councilmember Bucklon, did you have comments?
No, I agree with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Osanga?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz?
No, I agree with that wording. And I think that links that eventually having some visitors, but limited capacity, allowing the workers and locals to still utilize the campground.
Thank you. Councilmember Butts?
No, none.
Councilmember Cease?
Can I ask the administration something?
Yes, please.
Okay. We were at the 50% with your, with the amount of the reservation last week. And I know you're working on that program to be able to go to full capacity today, which you didn't do, which I'm glad.
It happened on the 28th, Councilmember Cease.
You can't revert that program back to that.
So Councilmember Cease, that actually opened up to 100 capacity on the 28th of June, was my understanding.
I thought, well, if they opened it, that's one thing. But I thought that they said they wouldn't have it open until October 1st of each month.
I'll let you speak to that.
At the last meeting. But, okay. So is that 100% or...
Yeah.
I know, just that you can't put back your program like it was last month.
I'll let the Parks and Rec Director speak. I'm sorry to keep interrupting you. I'll go ahead and let the Parks and Rec Director speak. I'm sorry for interruptions.
So we did, we did open up the administratively-held sites from 50% to 100% on, thereabouts, on June 28th. We can, in the system, I mean, we could make those rules. The only issue we have now is that we have a bunch of existing reservations that exceed that 50%. So we would have to, we'd have to, you know, cancel people's reservations. And I'm not sure what, by what process we would do that.
And it's for 30 days. So we can do whatever 30 days from now. But between now and then, it's administratively, it's a lot of work.
Yeah. Code it to COVID.
But in other words, you're saying that we, with the reservations, that 150 did it for this weekend. But next weekend, we get reservations for 100, for 100%?
I did not know, I did not know the current numbers for next weekend. Typically, typically, the bookings tend to drop off after, you know, the next weekend that's upcoming. So I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I'm not aware of what Forest Acres is at the moment.
And Councilmember Cease, maybe I'll speak to your point if this is, if this is what you're getting at. I mean, I'm expecting that we will see additional cancellations. So as part of that grace period, I'm sure you're managing, like, as people hear that we have some issues down here, people will cancel. We're through the 4th of July, which is probably a very busy weekend. I know the Silver Salmon Derby is coming up in August. But again, if that's the 30 days out, hopefully, we'll be able to circumvent and go to 50 at that point. And I'm seeing nods, the folks on the phone, does that sound reasonable? If you don't think that's reasonable, please speak up now. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that amendment.
Madam Mayor, did you want to have the words reservation or campers or just reservations?
Reservations.
Okay. So voting on the amendment to change the second sentence to the city will not take additional reservations over 50% capacity. Cease?
Yes.
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
Now, I'm going to jump in here because we still have the sentence at the end that says, "City-owned campgrounds may remain open for use by essential workers and critical infrastructure employees." And I want to hear from counsel of intent. And if folks think we need to leave that in there at all, or if it's just within that 50% capacity. So what I'm looking for is intent on the record before we either move to strike that or amend that. I'll start with Vice Mayor McClure. Is it okay if I start with you?
You could, but I think perhaps...
Sorry, I have an update if you want.
That would be perfect.
So Forest Acres, for this weekend, 40 out of 45 sites are reserved. Boulder Campground, 30 out of 36 sites are reserved.
So we'll have to just move into the 50% with those?
Correct. It tends to drop off the following weekend pretty dramatically.
Dramatically. Thank you. That was a great update. Thank you. So Vice Mayor McClure, may I start with you? On maybe the intent, if we need to leave some language in to make sure employees, or maybe we'll go through and see what folks' intent is.
Right. My intent would be to allow the employees and the volunteers that are currently occupying spaces to stay there. If that's, should we state maybe beyond the 50% allowing that? I don't know how many numbers of people that is, though. If it's a significant number, I guess I need to ask that question.
I don't have that...
So that might be, that might be a hard point to, like, decide between who's an employee and who's a visitor.
Are you saying only city infrastructure, essential employees?
No.
No, 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 no. So like, so like, folks working here. I'll call on you now, for sure.
I believe the Sea Life Center only has six spots, and I don't know that they're all full anyway, but...
Those would be separate. Well, anyway, my intent...
So let's get that under. I mean, I would also consider those separate.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead with your intent.
Oh, the intent that I would like here is for sure to be able to have those people stay in. If it's just assumed, and we don't even have to use the language because they're there, then that would be fine to drop the whole sentence, I guess.
Okay. Let's get through everyone's, Councilmember Bucklon?
I don't want to drop this sentence because it would clear the intent. So if we kept it in there, that if at any part we changed something, we didn't have to add something new in.
Okay.
So that would be protecting the Sea Life Center people who are there, as well as the seasonal employees, people who are workers here, not just the Sea Life Center, or maybe city, any employee of somewhere here who's currently living here to work. So I think we should keep that in, the intent to stay just in case anything else changes. We don't have to add anything back.
So before I go to other comments, I might go ahead and just, because it looks like there's somewhat of intent. I might just suggest a motion so that we can further our discussion and keep moving. So the motion I would make is, with that last sentence, "City-owned campgrounds may remain open for use by..." I would strike "essential" and "critical infrastructure", and then, as defined in the State of Alaska Public Health Mandate. So that's the language that I provided previously. And if I have a second, I'll speak to that.
I'll second.
Okay. So the reason why I'm doing that is I just, you know, we did this when we were potentially closing the campgrounds in its entirety to make sure workers could stay. But I don't want to just limit it to essential workers. Like, I don't think, like, potentially Sea Life Center, we know, all know everyone's job is essential. I'm not going to, I'm not demeaning anyone. But essential as defined by the State of Alaska. So that's why I'm going to go ahead and make those changes so that it's clear, local seasonal workers, whether they're defined as essential or not, would be allowed to have campgrounds.
Question, Madam.
Yeah.
Sorry. Do you, do you actually mean language in there for city or local? Because right now, it's anyone in the State of Alaska who qualifies as this, could claim that they're a critical infrastructure worker.
So we're striking, we're striking critical infrastructure. You know, that is a possibility. I actually discussed that with the attorney. To leave it kind of general unless we had a problem.
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine if counsel wants me to specify. I just, you know, I feel like putting the intent on the record that we're talking about seasonal employees, because at some level, we're going to dial down and add so much information. But I'm fine to change it as we go through the discussion. So we've had Vice Mayor McClure speak. Let's go to Councilmember Cease. Do you have comments?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Bucklon?
I think it's important to keep this in there. I do like the revisions to it, where the strike's from there. Because we will, we do have a lot of people who live there and work here and provide essential employment at jobs here.
Councilmember Butts?
Yes, I really like the intent here with this one. I'm wondering if you might also strike the word "may" as part of your motion?
Okay. You know, I actually want to also add something to it. So let's deal with this and then do a second. I'll make a second motion to clean some of it up.
And, yes, and then I think I take it. I'm having something for the sewer area though, too, yeah.
Okay. I agree with you. If we move forward with this, I do have some cleaning up language. But Councilmember Kreitz?
I'm in agreement with the new language.
Thank you. Councilmember Osanga?
Well, I agree with the new language also.
Thank you. If we vote on that, then I'll have an immediate amendment after, if we could vote on that.
Voting on the amendment to strike the words "essential" and "critical infrastructure" from Section 3.
And "as defined in the State of Alaska Public Health Mandates."
Both.
Thank you.
Yeah. Cease?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
So I'm going to make a motion to strike the word "may" and add the word "sewered area" after "by." So that last sentence will read, "City-owned campgrounds remain open for the use by sewered area workers and employees." That's my motion, if there's a second.[1660.92]
I'll second.
Sewered area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll speak to that really quick, and I'll also say it's going to be challenging, potentially, to the staff. So I'm saying that we need to have grace. If someone, you know, if bring it to Parks and Rec's attention, who they are and why they're there, that would be incredibly helpful. So if, if someone's, you know, said, "Oh, you can't renew, you need to leave," don't put it on Facebook. Please call Parks and Rec and let's work through this, because I think the intent of counsel is to give some leeway. We know that there's going to be mistakes and bumps, and we'll just do our best to try to meet the intent of what's happening. That's my comments. I'll go through and, and see with others with the motion. Vice Mayor McClure, did you second that? Did you want to speak to that?
No, I agree with you on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Baklan? No comments. Councilmember Cease, did you have any further comments?
The only thing that I thought about when you removed the "may" about will in there, will they remain open? I don't know, that seems like a short, "City-owned campground will remain open." Then we don't have to go back, and if we shut the campground down, if we have more trouble, that, that is certainly will open for them. We wouldn't have to change that again.
I'd rather worry about that at that time, but I'll, we'll see if anyone else bites on that. Councilmember Butts?
No, nothing else.
And then Councilmember Kreitz?
No comment.
Councilmember Osenga?
No, I have no comment.
Thank you. And then I have no further comments. Madam Clerk, could you call for the vote, please?
Voting on the amendment to strike the word "may" and add the words "sewered area" before "workers and employees." Butts?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Baklan?
Yes.
Cease?
Yeah.
And Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
So I think four and five are going to be involved. I'm going to go ahead and just preempt, because I, no one has to hit me under the table. We'll do a five minutes and return at 8:40 with, for a break.
It's all right. I can do that.
Yes.
Councilmember Butts here. So I do applaud the efforts of Councilmember Bakla there too, about this or two, but this emergency order is for 30 days to try to slow things down, pump the brakes on all this stuff here too. So I think for 30 days, it's not, we're not asking too much of people to say, if you have a wedding planned, if you have something else with plans, put it off for 30 days. And so I think we should keep this provision in there because that's what this ordinance is for.
Thank you. Are there any further comments?
Let's call for a vote. What is the motion?
Voting on the amendment.
The motion is to, oh, I'm sorry, strike Regulation Number Four in its entirety.
Voting on the amendment to strike Section Four. Kreitz?
Yes.
Bakla?
Yes.
McClure?
No.
Butts?
No.
Sees?
No.
Osanga?
No.
Mary Terry?
No.
That motion has failed.
Councilmember Bakla, did you have a further motion to make?
Yes, I'd like to add at the end of Section Four to add the suggestion from our attorney. Could you, Holly, it's Tony, could you please repeat the freedom of expression?
For?
Part that you had mentioned before?
Sure. I think that we could say, we can say this excludes gatherings gathered by council emergency regulation number five. We could just add and gatherings for purposes of exercising constitutional rights to, actually, you could just say constitutional rights.
Okay.
How about that? Because then that would get, that would protect all of the amendments to the Constitution. You know, because we do have, we assemble for various reasons, right? And so there's freedom of religion, there's freedom of speech, there's protests for other reasons. So I think that would be the most all-inclusive way to address that.
If you're making that motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
But I'll let you speak to that.
I think that would make me feel comfortable about keeping Regulation Number Four, just so that we were covering our bases if there was any sort of challenge to having some sort of gathering that was for purposes of constitutional rights.
Thank you. I'll go through the list to speak. Councilmember Butts, did you have any comments, sir?
No, I think, there you go, just my last comment. I think we're trying to kind of slow everything down.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Osanga?
I can see, I can see why this is being brought up. My only concern about this is that kind of just opening a door for, okay, I guess what I'm going to say is, are we going to start looking at groups of 20 protesting? Are they going to have to socially separate? I mean, it just seems like it was so simple before.
Okay.
I need to learn how to say it.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Sees?
I think the wording would be, it sounds all right to me, very amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember McClure?
I have no comments.
Okay. I mean, I am going to vote in support. You know, if folks after today want to do car protests around the city based on what we've done tonight, I want to make sure that their rights to do that are retained, or if they want to, you know, have an outdoor worship service, I don't know. You know, I think all those things would be fine for me, and I think that those people would be respectful and social distance. So that will be just some of my comments. Clerk McClure, I'm sorry, Clerk Baloo, would you go ahead and call for a vote on that?
Voting on the amendment to add gatherings for the purpose of exercising constitutional rights. Kreitz?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
No.
Bakla?
Yes.
Osanga?
No.
Sees?
Yes.
Mary Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
Thank you.
No.
Sees?
Yes.
Mary Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
Thank you.
Are there any further amendments to council emergency regulation number four? And I'll just be silent for a minute and see if anyone speaks up. Okay, moving on to council emergency regulation number five, I'm going to start off with my amendment, and you should have that in front of you. Following ecotourism operations, I want to add, and all places of worship, and then strike in its entirety the last sentence that says no establishments, I'll serve more than 60 persons indoors at one time regardless of maximum capacity. And I'll look for a second before I discuss.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the reason why I'm making these amendments is I want to be clear that there are some places in Seward that have a maximum capacity of over 60 persons that can still, as we're requiring masks and talking about social distancing, can have more than 60 persons in there safely at a time that won't impact the spread of the coronavirus. And I, you know, I just wrote a few down. Safeway potentially, Alaska Sea Life Center, Kenai Fewer Tours, you know, Major Marine. I think that those are large enough venues and locations that if we, even if we let it be, if we just talk about 60%, maximum of 50% capacity, I think that covers what we're trying to do. And I think it's pretty obvious why I want to add, I think places of worship definitely are not represented in what was previously listed. So I'll go through, that's my support, and I'll go through and get comments. I'll start with Kreitz, did you have comments pertaining to the amendment?
I don't.
Thank you. Osanga, do you have comments pertaining to the amendment?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Bakla, do you have comments pertaining to the amendment?
No.
No. Councilmember Sees, do you have comments pertaining to the amendment?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Butts, do you have comments pertaining to the amendment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor McClure, do you have comments pertaining to the amendment?
No, I don't.
Madam Clerk, could we go ahead and call for a vote?
Voting on the amendment in Section Five to add all places of worship and strike the last sentence. McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Sees?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Bakla?
Yes.
Mary Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
And since we're on this section, I'll open it up again, but I really want to be clear that the way this language reads is, shall limit indoor seating capacity to 10 people or no more than 50% of maximum capacity, whichever is greater. Because I know there's a lot of concerns with our charter industry and sightseeing industry, so that would not restrict, say, a six-pack or a boat that goes out, you know, to the bay to sightsee that's less than 10 people. I will say, however, that doesn't negate all the other things that we're trying to do in this situation with social distancing and limit the spread of COVID. I'll go through the list. Thanks for letting me reinforce that. Councilmember Butts, do you have anything pertaining to, excuse me, Regulation Number Five, either an amendment or comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz, do you have anything pertaining to Regulation Number Five, either comments or amendments?
No, I think that this is a reasonable expectation considering that we get approved the previous item.
Thank you. Councilmember Osanga?
No comment.
Councilmember Bakla?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Sees?
Okay, when we say that shall limit indoor seating capacities to 10 people or not more than 50%, so is that considering, like, charter boats?
Yeah, so say, yeah, so say, I'm just going to use Joe Blow's charter, I'll just say Joe Blow's charter has the capacity for 12 people. They wouldn't be, they would be able to have 10 people as opposed to six people, the way this is written.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Then I have nothing else.
Okay, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McClure?
I have no comments.
Let me think, I did want to say one thing about this. So there were some comments and questions, and Dr. Zink talked about, you know, it's not the percent of capacity, it's about the social distancing, tables apart, all those other things, which I totally agree with. But I think that as a body, it's easiest for us to say 50% capacity and then have the business owners realize, you know, how they can best organize their space, whether it's one door in and one door out, whether it's tables six feet apart, 10 feet apart, how they can stage that themselves, instead of us trying to micromanage every single situation. That's why I have it, that's why I think 50 capacity is appropriate. And then the other thing I have to say is if we start having problems with that, I feel like this is a document that could come back to this body for us to react to. And I've also seen the businesses quickly react. So if they identify a problem, we can be graceful and realize that, you know, they're trying their best. If they identify a soft target area that's causing a problem, that they're able to adapt to that. So that's just my comments on this, and on this section, because we've already approved the amendment, it's just to this section. So I'll call out one more time, I don't have any further amendments. Are there any further amendments or comments to Regulation Number Five? Councilmember Bakla?
I'd like to strike charters from Regulation, from Regulation Number Five. I'd like to strike charters from Regulation Number Five.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for talking.
Okay, Councilmember Bakla?
The reason why I'd like to strike charters is because I feel that that is an essential business. People all around Alaska come to get the food sources they need for the summertime, and regulating them to, and I'm not sure on how many boats are over, you know, how many boats can carry X amount of people, and it's only half of this and that and what the numbers are. I do not know. So I just feel that that is limiting a essential need in Alaska for people to harvest food, especially in this time, when we have rising prices of food and meat and shortages of different things. It is important that that be, as the state has said too, that that is an essential business, which also ties into the commercial fishing fleet under the state mandates and regulations.
So I'll go with, Vice Mayor McClure, did you have comments?
Just maybe a suggestion, if you're going to, well, you're referring to fishing charters.
Yes.
It did not say fishing charters.
It says charters.
I know, so, but this is your intent, that you're exempting fishing charters, right? I mean, because there are other charter boats, I would think.
Are there, so let me get to comments. Councilmember Butts, do you have comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it that well, what the amendment was.
So the amendment is to strike and charters from the regulation. And I guess maybe I'll start off and ask Councilmember Bakla, where do you see them then reflected? Because if we strike them, I'd like to make sure that that language is called out in a motion to follow. I don't want it to be left as an ambiguity.
As in, I don't understand what you mean.
Well, you know, if we strike and charters, I don't want it to be interpreted that fishing charters are not allowed at all in the city limits. So I just need to make sure that we're not creating an ambiguity because they're not listed.
I guess the way I read this is, so eating and drinking establishments, restaurants, bars, ice cream, and especially food, and especially food shops, all retail stores, sightseeing and ecotourism operations, I do not feel that, I feel that those are elective activities. Those are things that you can do in your free time, or if you have, if you would like to spend more money, or go to dinner, or go to a bar, or something. Those are extracurricular activities. I feel that a charter can be an extracurricular activity, but it can also be a food source and a way that people feed their families.
Yeah, so that's not my question. I just, I guess what we'll do is state on the record that if we strike, you're right now saying to strike and all tours and charters, or and all, and all tours and strike and charters?
Yes.
If we strike that, I really want it on the record that then what we're doing is not excluding fishing charters from operating, but what we're doing is excluding them from the 50% capacity rules.
Yes.
Okay. So let's go around to, Councilmember Butts, I'm sorry, did I already ask you for a comment? I just lost my place.
No, I think you answered my question.
Okay. Councilmember Kreitz, did you have a comment?
I did not.
Councilmember Osanga, did you have a comment?
My only comment was that I kind of thought charters were covered pretty well in this. I don't see a need to remove them from this section of this regulation.
Thank you. Councilmember Sees, did you have a comment?
What, and you don't want to maybe leave out the fishing charters, why don't you put except fishing charters?
Okay, well, let's.
We have to follow that.
Okay. Let's, okay, that's a good suggestion for, we'll take that up later. Vice Mayor McClure?
I just, here, just a question for Councilmember Bakla. Are you just deleting the word charters, and charters? You're not doing and all tours.
You're just deleting and charters.
And charters, okay.
Okay. Did you have further comments?
No, no, I just wanted to.
The only comment I'm going to make is I will vote for this, but if anyone needs to speak up, I believe the intent, as we established, is if this gets voted on, fishing charters continue to be allowed within the city, they just are not limited to the 50% maximum capacity.
That's your intent.
Okay, so if anyone disagrees with that intent, speak up now.
Mayor, this is Holly, I don't disagree, I agree with your interpretation. I do want to just remind council, we are talking about indoor seating capacity, just because our discussion hasn't emphasized that. So for the record, I want to make sure that it's clear. We're not talking about capacity on deck.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakla?
I do, I don't know if there's, I don't know boats and that stuff. So I know I've been on a boat once at a charter company, or it might not even have been a charter, I went on a taxi. And I don't know if they use that for charter or not, but that was all indoor seating. So if they can, if that's the way they transport people and then they are outside, or they have to be outside, I just, do you understand that, Holly, what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely. And I don't think it hurts to take charters out. I think it absolutely has the impact of eliminating the regulation of that industry. And so I think, I think that removing the term accomplishes your objective. I just want to make sure that we're not giving the impression that we're talking about capacity as a whole.
Total, total capacity.
Absolutely.
Even with dealing other aspects that are listed. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, great amendment. Yep. Madam Clerk, could we call for a vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry, was there someone else speaking?
Councilmember Butts.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, Councilmember Butts. Go ahead.
So with this amendment, then this would include any other boat that's going, that's working on the water, but this would not have any reach over any of the fishing charters that we have here in Seward. Is that correct?
That's the intent. So you want to clarify, we still have in here tours, so if someone's purely taking a small boat out for a tour, that would still be included in this, correct? Councilmember Bakla's intent is to take out the opportunity to provide food for your family, or go fishing and fill your freezer. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we're ready for a vote.
Voting on the amendment to strike the words and charters. McClure?
Yes.
Osanga?
No.
Sees?
I don't, yes.
Bakla?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Mary Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved. Thank you.
So Section Six, what Section Six tells us is this is, which it was limited, so, you know, actually, this was handled very well by the city attorney, is that when we've had items like this before us, they've redone all the narrative, and then we've made a ton of changes, and then we have to go and make amendments to the narrative. So what Section Six does is, the narrative attached that we can provide to people as explanation will be made to match what we've done tonight. So it says, therefore, council hereby directs the city manager to draft corresponding commentary to regulations and public comment on the city website. So these will be included on the city website and provided to the public. Is there, I'm going to go through the list and see if there's comments or questions pertaining to Section Six. Councilmember Butts?
No, none.
Councilmember Kreitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Osanga?
No comment.
Councilmember Bakla?
No.
Councilmember Sees?
No comment.
Vice Mayor McClure?
No.
And I have no comments. Section Seven is just standard language about codification. I did want to, oh, I'm getting all my papers mixed up. Section, I just lost it, Section Eight. Oh. So Section Eight, so I want us to be very deliberative, and see if there's any changes or motions to Section Eight. And this says, this ordinance shall take effect on the day it is enacted and shall remain in effect for 30 days or until the declaration of emergency regarding the COVID-19 expires without removal. So I want to talk about the 30 days, and I also want to talk about, so the ordinance takes effect, Attorney Wells, but is there any delay or notice to the public? How, or with our amendments tonight, is that taken care of?
That's taken care of with the process and the hearing this evening. It'll go into effect upon posting. So we do want to make sure we comply with our posting requirements and then we get that done. So it will, it will go into effect upon your adoption. And but when we post it, that's when you'll see, to the extent of enforcement, you know, and that'll, that'll be triggered by the notice.
Okay. Is there any, is there anyone that wants to discuss the 30 days? And I'll go through the list. Councilmember Bakla, I'll just start with you.
I think 30 days is a long time to go through this. It also doesn't have any revisions or that the council or city management is going to review this at any point within that 30 days. So I do not agree with the 30 days.
Do you?
I would like to make a motion to strike 30 days, in parentheses, 30 days to 14 days.
So where, I'm looking, I'm using my phone to look at my calendar. So 14 days from today would bring us to July 15th. So do you, oh, I get, did you make a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing and seeing none, that dies. Are there any further comments or questions?
Well, I would like, so if we have to have it any longer, well, we have to go through all this again, for the fact up to 30 days or up to 60 days. It doesn't mean that we can't drop it in 14 or 30. But if we, if we still have this problem down here, that everybody is still getting it, then 14 days would might not be enough, because they tell you to stay quarantine for another 14 days.
Do you have a motion, Councilmember Sees?
That, well, I'd like to say if remain in effect for up to 60 days, you know, for up to 60 days, it doesn't mean it has to be 60 days. We can less than 60 days. So I would like to say for up to 60 days.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, hearing none, that dies for lack of a second.
I'm thinking at that, this is Counselor Kreitz.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Sees and Councilmember Kreitz, up to 60 days. And so.
Mayor, this is Holly, I think that we, I appreciate the goal there, I think it's a good one, but I think it leaves, it's too open-ended for the public, because they won't know, they won't have anything definitively telling them when it's in effect unless something repeals it. So if we say something like, I mean, if you keep saying 30 days or remove 30 days to 60 days, you can always repeal these regulations, and you can always, I mean, and we can't go beyond 60 days because this is an emergency ordinance, right? So I think you're better off just leaving it, setting a set effective period and either extending it beyond that period through another emergency ordinance, or repealing it completely before that period. You still have that flexibility, but we want a date starting in there.
Okay, I understand. Then I withdraw mine.
So it's on the floor as a body. So did you just want to change it for 60 days instead of up to 60 days?
No.
Okay, so is there?
Because if we wanted it for 14 or less than that, then I just wanted it so that we could say it could be. But I agree with Holly.
Okay, so, but what?
If you put a number in there.
So you have a second, and I'm going to check with your second. If you don't agree that it should be withdrawn, we'll vote on it as a council.
No, that's fine, it's withdrawn.
Okay, we'll withdraw.
Any objections?
Any objections from council to withdraw? So it remains in effect for 30 days, and we have two council members during that, excuse me, we have two council meetings during that time.
And Holly was saying then that we can knock it off in 14 or 15 days?
Well, it would take.
Yes, you said, Holly?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, you can do that.
So you would, you would need to work with the clerk to make sure that there's public notice to get that on a council agenda, or find a friend and put it on as a special meeting, or talk the city manager into it, or talk me into it. Councilmember Bakla?
That being said, I'd like to make a motion to review this ordinance at our next city council meeting, so directing the clerk to put this on as a discussion item on the next council meeting.
Which would be the 13th?
Yes, please.
As a discussion item, not actionable?
Yes, as an action item.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Let's have discussion on that. Councilmember Bakla, I'll let you start.
I think this could be a good, positive thing for both, for both sides. There may be things that we want to change and restrict more, maybe, and there may be things that you want to change and restrict less within 14 days. So even if it was an actionable item and we decided not to, to remove it from the agenda, that could also be voted on by the council, but at least it would be brought up at the next meeting.
Councilmember Osanga, do you have comments?
Well, my thought would be that in weeks' time, before the next meeting, if someone had something to bring up, they would be able to publicly notice it or do what they need to do to get it, their actions taken upon the council. So I'm not sure that it's really necessary to put it on the next agenda as an action item.
Okay. Councilmember Kreitz?
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Osanga. We also need to take into consideration that the timeframe from symptom onset with this disease is usually three to 14 days. I don't think, considering it's beginning in 14 days, as an item that we put on the agenda is absolutely necessary. We really don't know what's going to happen in the next 14 days.
Councilmember Butts?
No, I don't have anything.
Councilmember Sees?
Would that be one that could be on the approval on the agenda with a fair hunt? If we don't have anything to say about it, can we, is that something we would approve or not approve? or not approve? I don't know.
Okay.
But we, we're not looking to approve it at the next meeting. We only approve, we're just saying how long, right?
Okay, well, that's what I mean. Can it be on the consent agenda? That if we don't need to talk about anything, it'd be approved on the consent. That's what I'm asking. Is that something that goes on a consent agenda or not?
Well, you know, I question, I don't know that it would be on the consent agenda because it would be on there for discussion. It's, I would want some procedural evidence from the attorney because this is very unusual to put an ordinance that's been enacted up for review again.
Right.
We'll just, Vice Mayor McClure?
I agree. I don't, I, if we, presuming we pass this tonight, it's passed. I mean, to undo it would take a separate...
It's a whole new action.
It's a whole new action. So I don't see putting this on again. I mean, we've gone through this. And I don't, I also don't see putting the public through a discussion of this right away. I mean, that's within two weeks. So I just, just soon, get done with it tonight. Then if we need a big change, have another or something else, you know. But I guess, I don't see doing this. But maybe we could ask the attorney about how that would work?
Attorney Wells, it sounds like there's a question. If we just, if the motion on the floor is to have this reappear at our next regular council meeting, do you have any comments regarding that?
No, I mean, this emergency ordinance will bound you effect. And if you put it on your next council meeting, it's already in effect. So there, we would have to do a different ordinance, reiterating, renewing, extending, you know, doing something, taking some action regarding this emergency ordinance because this emergency ordinance becomes a law that's in effect. So if you could put it on as a discussion item at the next meeting, if you just want to discuss it again, you can, look at our resolution, making comments regarding it. You know, but generally speaking, if you want to make it only long enough to, if you want to create an ordinance that only is, then I would do that and bring us a different ordinance extending that ordinance.
Okay, council...
Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you for your recommendation. Councilmember Bakwan, did you have a comment?
So my intent was not to revisit this or to, you know, pull it back, repeal it, whatever. My intent was that we were going to be monitoring it. And at least that at the next, that's why I said discussion item at the first meeting, was that we could revisit this at least and talk about what we feel, how the strategies are going, and maybe we can assess from there. There's very little time that we have as a council to talk through things together. And if we can take advantage of that time while we are together to work through the solutions that we have, that we feel that we need to do, then I think it's worth putting it on at least as a discussion item for the next council meeting.
Okay, I'm going to make comments to that. So here, here's where, why I'm going to vote against it. Because I think as we move forward with this, we're either going to find fatal flaws that need to be changed, or it's going to be working fine, or there's things that can be taken away because, you know, we look at things. And that, I think, needs to be brought as a separate. So even this is, if this is on as a discussion item, we'll discuss it, and then there's still nothing potentially to be done. So I'm going to rely on administration. I'm going to rely on us and our contacts in the public and people making comments to us. If there's something needs to be brought forward again, that that can be brought forward as a second action. So that's why I'm going to vote against it. I'll let you have the final word if you would like.
We can vote against it, but I can still put it on the next agenda as a discussion item. So, I mean, I'm just asking right now that we can either do it as a process that the clerk have it now and put it on the next agenda, or I can add it on later.
And you're right. And when we approve that agenda, council could choose to strike it off.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So let's vote on that. Okay, so the amendment, or the motion is to review this ordinance at the July 13th meeting. As a discussion, it's not an actionable item, correct?
Yes.
As a discussion item. Cease?
Yeah.
Butts?
No.
Bakwan?
Yes.
Kreitz?
No.
McClure?
No.
Osenga?
No.
Mayor Terry?
No.
That amendment, or that motion has failed. Okay, so I think we're back to this ordinance in its entirety. I'm going to go back through the list and see if folks have final amendments that they would like to make, final comments to the ordinance in its entirety, and then we'll be voting on the ordinance in its entirety. So I'll start with Councilmember Osenga.
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz?
No, I think we can't do a, to compromise that there's benefits for everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Butts?
No, no comment, no.
Councilmember Bakwan?
No.
Councilmember Cease?
No.
Councilmember McClure?
No comment.
And I have no comments. Madam Clerk, would you call for...
Mayor, Ms. Holly?
Yeah.
One more, one more comment. I hate to do this to you guys, but I actually, I'm thinking about the enactment, the use of that word, and I'm worried that if there was ever an issue with posting it on the website, that would, that would create confusion for the public. So I would like to make one recommendation for one more amendment. And that would be to amend Section 8 regarding effective date to delete the word enacted and replace it with the words posted on the city website. And that, the purpose of that would make it effective upon posting, just in case the posting doesn't happen. I mean, I, that would be the city administration and the clerks.
I'll, I'll...
But I just don't want to leave that up for uncertainty.
Thank you. I'll make that motion, and I'll see if I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay. Attorney Wells, I think you provided background for that. Does anyone have any questions or comments, or should we just call for a vote? I think that's, that is better to make sure that our public is adequately informed. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's call for a vote, please. Voting on the amendment to strike the word enacted and posted on the city website. Osenga?
Yes.
Cease?
Yes.
Bakwan?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved. Thank you. Next, oh, let's call for a vote on the ordinance in its entirety. And I'll give one more shout out. Are there any final comments? Madam Clerk, can we call for the vote, please? Voting on the enactment of ordinance, emergency ordinance 2020-008 as amended. Butts?
Yes.
Bakwan?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Cease?
Yeah.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That ordinance is enacted.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is number seven, citizen comments. Madam Clerk, did you have further citizen comments for the second portion of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have two. One, citizen asked to be called and then withdrew during the meeting. And then the other one is a call out to Tara Reamer.
Thank you.
This is Tara. Sorry, I forgot to tell you. I did need to speak again.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening. So I'll just verify there's, there's no other citizen comments.
There are no others.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is council and administrative comments in response to citizen comments. I'm going to kick it off to you, City Manager Mazaros, because I think that this would be an appropriate time to discuss what we need to talk about with a potential Code Orange.
Sure, sure.
And then council, I will, I will be calling for a round of council comments. We'll just give the administration a chance to discuss the potential Code Orange if that's acceptable.
So we're socially distanced, and I'm going to take this off so you can hear me. Otherwise, I'm very monotone.
Yep, thank you.
So first of all, Attorney Wells has helped me with updating our Code Orange. And I'm going to, we're going to send that out in the morning so that the council really understands what the non-essential piece taken out really means. It isn't, it isn't closing all businesses. It isn't super limiting. It's when we had restaurants doing takeout. It's a lot of things. So it would be good if you understand what that is. The first thing I want to address is citizen comments is obviously the governor and the president and the borough mayor and our body has taken formal action declaring an emergency. There is in fact an emergency status in place. That's why we renew it every month. The one thing I do want to talk about, a little bit about, is how our emergency operation team and the information that we are acting on takes time to get, and it's delayed. And so taking action is, it's a crystal ball, right? Like, so tonight, I'm informed that we have a bunch more tomorrow test positives. I want, I want the public to understand, I had a notification today on a staff member that was positive today in our team. I have 15% of my staff is not here because they're being tested due to exposure, right? The person tested today was traced back to the 21st of June at the solstice event that they were at. It takes five to eight days to, could take longer, to develop enough viral load to test positive. So we got results today from Monday. That person was infected on the 21st about. You're, you're talking, we're on the very front edge of this. And the information I'm getting, you know, the medical body gets official stuff, and we put that out in the state, broadcast that. So I want you to know that this is on a very upward trend. We're just starting to ease into this. The information that I get is, you know, put it out there, these actions tonight, it's up to individuals. If you have kids, if you have friends. If the person isn't in your household, and we have dinner and are in close proximity, if they're in my office, you need to follow the CDC guidelines. And it's up to each of us to stop the spread, period. Doesn't matter who you are, how much precaution you take in cleaning and your staff. If you have 50 people working for you, we have 100, we have 98, not including seasonals. I have no idea what their social lives are, what their friendship circles are. Those people engage, and even if you do everything possible, lots of places, the Sea Life Center has exquisite, the prison has amazing procedures, the hospital, those people still go home and they still work. And they're exposed because this is everywhere. There's nobody to blame. It's nobody's fault. It happens. It's a disease. If you're close and you're exposed, you're going to probably develop it. So most people don't know they have it. Those, those are the things that we're working off of. So tomorrow, we're going to talk together with our team, the regional and state people. They are keeping us more informed because we are the hot spot in our state. And that's going to get a lot hotter before the weekend is over. And, and if, you know, they're like, some of the people, I don't want to expose who's telling me what, and I get information, they're like, if I was a betting person, I put all my money on, we're going to have a lot of cases in the next five days. And right now, we haven't seen much of that yet. So keep that in mind. If we have to ratchet things down, the governor, the state team is not going to tell us what to do. They're going to say, try to keep it in Seward. And, you know, we've been through what it's like to shut things down, and I applaud those businesses. But it's really hard to voluntary close when your staff is sick and you have to clean your facility and you cannot be open. And we have departments like that right now I'm looking at. So it's going to affect the whole community. And please, please take it seriously. Please think about those people that, you know, wear a mask in close proximity, wash your hands. It's, it's, follow it. And so we will send that out tomorrow. It's imperative that you understand what a next level with this is, because it's a matter of when we have to do that, not if. I don't want to hash into that. The attorney and I, we're going to go through this longer ordeal about explaining what we look at and how we look at the matrices and what information we're prepared and required to do to protect individuals, our health and welfare and safety of our citizens. It is part of our duty. The economic condition of this community, we don't want to close things. We don't want to cut people down. It affects all of us. It affects the city budget. Think, think about that. Think about the schools and your kids going back, you know. I, my kids are grown, but I, I can't imagine going through another year of homeschool. I can't imagine if we have to withstand months of closures. It depends on each of us, and we need to remember that. That's, I don't want to be on a soapbox. We've heard it all. We understand it. Take it very seriously. And it's, it's hard to evaluate incomplete data on where this is going and give a good suggestion on, on doing things that are very detrimental to our business owners and our families and our individual employees. That's Holly. Please, please think about it and think about others. And that's, that's where we're at.
Thank you. So I'll go around. Attorney Wells, did you have comments before I go around to council?
Yeah, so my little here, I think one of the things that administration wanted me to do is introduce to the public the three metrics that they will be looking at as they determine whether or not you need to go to a Code Orange alert. And then very briefly, talk about what an Orange alert really is, so people have a concept of what, where we're going if that, if that comes to, if that is something that is a declaration issued by the city manager, and it's Wells, the director of emergency and disaster, and council approves that.
Yes, please. If you want to go ahead and do that, that'd be great.
I will try to move very quick. I know it's been a very long night. But on April 24th, the State of Alaska sent out their reopening Alaska responsibly letter to the municipalities. And when they did that, Governor Dudley started to the community, he let them know that he was taking a deliberate, measured approach to reopen Alaska responsibly, and was doing that by establishing four basic metrics that the DHSS was going to track in order to determine what needed to happen with social distancing. And they also adopted a sort of green light, red light, yellow light alert system, right? Those four metrics are epidemiology, testing public health capacity and healthcare capacity. So the council knows, the city council adopted a recovery plan that wholly adopted the state's recommended metrics as well as its alert system. But it recognized that being a small community, there may be times when what was going on, when we look at these metrics in Seward, deviated from what was happening on a statewide level. And therefore, the state might be yellow, but the city of Seward might have a need to be something else, be more restrictive. And so that is where Code Orange came from. It is our local alert that says, hey, Wells, we are not with the stateage right now. We have gone somewhere that is requiring us to be more restrictive. This, this metric analysis is incredibly important because this ensures that emotions are minimized and measured approaches are taken, and nothing happens without there being medical data warranting it, especially because of the economic impact, right? So I'll walk you through those really quick. But then, that also, we, in order, when we were deciding what is going to happen, if we go through these metrics and it's a, a, you know, a explosion of COVID, that's probably a little histrionic, but we have a rapid increase of cases that is impacting us on a community-wide level, what actually happens? And so what the council did, most significantly, there are a few community outbreak rules regarding quarantine, but the main rule was a rollback to where the state was when it was yellow. It's a rollback to essential services and critical workforce continue to function. The rest of us are hunkering down, and we are going to the grocery store, we are going to get gas, we are getting our cars repaired, we are playing outside, running, going fishing, berry picking, some assistance activities and all the required. But we are not engaging in our, the current level of recreation and retail that we do. And there are a lot of businesses impacted by that level, by... And there were a lot of businesses impacted by that level, by that hunker down order that all of Alaska was under up until, I think it was about mid-April, right, that we sort of emerged from that. So that's really what I want to cover, so the community is prepared and ready to show up and talk about orange alert in the event that the city manager comes back with a declaration and council considering that. So when we look at epidemiology, so let's go back to our four, our four tests or our factors. We look at tracking disease trends and trend forecasting. So right there, we're just looking at how many cases do we have? What is going on with the cases? What are the health ramifications of COVID-19 as we understand it? And this analysis is done by our medical team. And we have a great medical team because what the emergency operations team has done is really reunified all of the healthcare providers in the community, and so we get a lot of input. Right now, they are gathering that information for the city manager, so we have accurate data regarding, and updated data, right, because it's changing constantly. The next factor is testing. So it's, when we look at testing, we look at, do we have enough tests? And we look at, what is the access to the test? But also, what is the return on, if we have somebody who gets a test, how fast are we finding out whether or not that's positive or not? Because the next thing we need to do is work with the state for contact tracing, right? When we look at testing, we look at the positivity factor. The World Health Organization tells us, we really want to see ideally one positive per ten test, right? We don't want to see more than that. If we're seeing more than that, we're not testing enough, because maybe we're more pointed with our testing, and so that means we have many more positive cases out there than we know. Right now, we have a batch of test results, and it's unclear if our positivity factor is outside that acceptable range. And again, we're looking to our medical team, not, you know, I am not making these determinations at all. We look to our medical team, we look to the CDC, World Health Organization, and the state medical team for those benchmarks. We also look at public health capacity. And this is important because this is, we're looking at the cases we have, the seriousness of those cases, the health complications or risks associated with those cases, but also we look at contact tracing. Can we, when we have a case, is it really clear to us who that person was in contact with? Can we go and locate those individuals? Do we have the ability to then test them? And then hopefully contain the disease pointively and respond in that way so that we can minimize the impact on the community? And right now, I've been collecting data on that point to determine, where is our outbreak? And the other issue we look at is, is this a community-wide outbreak, or is this isolated to an industry or a business? For example, if we have a seafood processor who has a lot of cases but has a great protocol, and so all those cases are staying contained and they're not entering the community, or even if we have a large number of cases, that may not warrant a code orange because the medical team feels that the risk to the community is not, is not so significant as to require an orange alert, right? So those are, that's what we're going to be analyzing, those are the numbers we're going to be bringing back. And we're going to look at also healthcare capacity. We're going to look at how many beds do we have, which realistically, we have, I believe there's four beds, realistically, we're hearing from our medical team, and the tolerance is really one person who is occupying that four bed capacity with COVID. And we're going to explain why that is, so that everybody understands the process and analysis going into this, and understands that no one is taking this lightly, and that this determination is being done and grounded in science and, and medical guidance. So then, let's say we go through this metric analysis, and determine based on the advice and recommendation of the medical team that an orange alert is recommended. So an orange alert, again, is going to go back to that hunker down order that we were all under in the State of Alaska in April. It was issued on March 27th. Under that order, there are numerous businesses that fall under essential services and critical workforce that can continue to operate. I think one of the most important ones that people should remember is any and all business that can maintain distancing requirements within less than 10 people onsite, right? So any of those businesses fall within an essential business definition by the state. So does healthcare, construction, utilities, mining, logging, banking, applicable entitlement companies, transportation companies, grocery stores, convenience stores, food and agricultural businesses, fishing, processing, media, auto and bike repair, laundry services, plumbers and electricians, home service providers, hardware stores, law offices, accounting, and I could go on. It's a very long list, and it's included with the outbreak rule. So this is not going to, I think it's really important that people are aware that we're not, this is to shut down the city and then put a, you know, put something across your road coming into Seward and lock everyone in their homes. That's not what this is. It is a rewind. And the beauty of a rewind is we go back to rules that have the exemptions and have been thoroughly thought out by the State of Alaska when it was implemented in March, at the end of March. And so the council isn't stuck working through the wording and the viability of each exemption. That's already all included in that mandate when it was issued, and that was Health Mandate 11. So I'll stop talking at any given moment, but that is, I think that is a good overview for the public.
And I would add that we cannot control travel. If you want to shut your community off, that's a governor-state level action that we cannot do. So, you know, just to be aware of that.
Great. So at this point, I'm going to go around for council comments. Councilmember Baklan, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Never when I ran for city council did I thought, did I think that I would be legislating behaviors, which is what somebody told me today, and I thought that spoke a lot. It's a hard thing that we did tonight, make, going through this line by line, but I'm glad that we had great direction from our mayor, who can really hold a good meeting. And really want to thank you for that, because I respect her a lot for being able to organize everyone together and all their thought processes, because it is not easy. I, I do have a lot of concerns with the mask mandate, because I feel that there's just some people you can't change their mind. And when you go and you put that mandate on a business, it creates a strain in that business. And that's coming from a person who tried to enforce mandates at a business. So my, I've never been against masks or wearing them in public or wearing them in enclosed spaces. I just feel it is a very hard measure to put on a business, on a mandate that, what do we expect now from Safeway? And do they start kicking people out? Do they have somebody at the door not letting you in? And that's putting a restriction on their business that they did not want for their business, if they did or not. So I want to be clear to the public about that. I'm not against masks, but I am definitely for making rules, and this was mentioned today too, was enforcing them in things that can be enforced in a uniform way. And I don't think that that can be enforced in a uniform way. And I want to thank all the rest of the council members for their time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Good comments. Councilmember Osanga?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody. I read through 65 emails on this computer the last couple of days, and I did thank you all of them. I'd like to thank everybody for their comments, but I would also like to say that I really think that this tonight was a compromise. I mean, we could have really actually gone to code orange, I think. I'm not sure what was recommended by our health professionals, but this is a compromise. I do think this is serious, and I would just like everyone to please take it seriously. Go and, please, be safe out there.
Thank you. Good comments. Councilmember Kreitz?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everyone again for their comments. I wanted to thank council tonight for actually being proactive and really listening to what's going on in the community and taking into consideration everyone's opinion. I think that, I want to reiterate Osanga's comments, that this wasn't a compromise. It was not to be extended, the healthcare community recommended, but it was a compromise. But I think it is, it is step forward into protecting the community, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good comments. Councilmember Butts?
I think everybody said it. Really no comments.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Cease?
I was, Councilmember Butts, I don't have anything to say, because you guys have said it all.
Good comments. Thank you.
Just thank you.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor McClure?
Just that this was indeed a compromise. It was go to code orange or do something. And this was partly why I co-sponsored this. This is, this is the something. I mean, at least we're doing something. Maybe we can avoid code orange, maybe, maybe, because this is a lot better than that. What I want to make sure is that the public knows, I don't know, it'll be on the website, but that the public knows what we did tonight, what's exactly the amendments, and because there's been so much misdirection on Facebook and stuff, so this isn't as dire as some people thought it might be, and then we've made some amendments. So if that can get up on the website and have the public check that out, they'll know what's what, you know? But this was a perfect example of how city councils should deal with things. We went through it piece by piece with the great direction of our mayor, and I want to thank you for that, so.
Thank you. Great comments. So I just want to thank all of council. I specifically want to thank folks on the phone, and I'm sorry if I stepped over you or spoke over you, but I appreciate everyone being patient with me. I want to just reiterate for the public, we are not in a situation where we're back to Mandate 11 that closed all nonessential businesses. None of what we've done tonight negates anyone's personal responsibility of trying to keep themselves healthy, and I know this is a trigger for a lot of people, and trying to keep other people healthy. Just let's give grace to each other and try to do our best to, you know, obviously COVID is real, there's different degrees of how you feel about how, you know, dire this is to people's health, but we are dealing with the ramifications of that, so the less people that get COVID, the better. I really, again, want to reiterate, citizens should not need the government to tell them what to do, so I hope that they are doing what the recommendations are. And in my opinion, this was the only action forward that, that was going to avoid going to that Mandate 11, so that's why I was supportive. I appreciate everyone's amendments. And I know that we have all the business plans filed with the city. I know that it's tough to reach out, but at least an email letting people, like even a push email saying, this is what happens, and let's do our best to help. You know, businesses are going to try to be navigating this. I don't think it's time to have police beat down people's doors. Let's, as you talk, as we talked about, education, 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 and there might be some things that we need to adjust later. And then I also want to say again, people are super mean, and that's fine, that I deserve and council deserves for people to be mean from them, because we chose to run and be in this situation, so obviously, that's what we bought into, I can admit that. But there are a lot of comments on Facebook, and it turns into an us versus them at a time when we should be most loving with everyone. Like, people on both sides of this are fearful or angry. Let's just approach people with as much grace and love that we can, even if they don't agree with us. We don't need to prove our point to everyone. We can try to be nice, because we're all, you know, dealing with this in different ways, would be my comment. And I just want to thank the public for sticking in with us for many hours. Thank our medical community, then I know isn't 100% happy, but, you know, both sides are probably unhappy we've done our job. And I will say, so I did text former Mayor Bardison, and I said, you know, timing is everything. So former Mayor Bardison got to shake the hand of a president, and I get to not shake anyone's hand. So we all get what we deserve. You guys have a good night. Thank you. I'll adjourn at 10:50.
Bye.